It is 7:33 PM on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I am the Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals and I'm calling this meeting of the Board to order. First, let's confirm all members and anticipated officials are present. Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Ben Catholy.
Here.
Adam LeBlanc.
Here.
And Brad Baranowski.
Here.
Good to have you all with us. Here on behalf of the town, we have Colleen Ralston, our zoning assistant.
Here.
And going through the items on our docket this evening, for 383916 Lansdowne Road, Jeremy Sylvan or Madeline Hickman are other few who are with us tonight. We're just voting on the final decision, so they do not need to appear. We do not see them here. For 384169 Henderson Street, Ryan or Martha Severi. We are also just voting on their final decision, so there's no need for them to appear. Appearing for 382220 Pond Lane, Doug Troyer.
Yes, present.
Good to have you with us. Appearing for docket 384029 Hemlock Street, we have Catherine Bender.
Yes, I'm here.
Good to have you with us. Appearing for docket 384317 Brattle Place, we have Daniel and Jennifer White.
We're here.
Good to have you with us. And for 3845319 Appleton Street, we have Nicholas and Christina D'Onofrio.
Yes, we're on.
Perfect. Thank you for being here as well. So tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with the bill signed by Governor Healy on March 28th, 2025, which extended temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June 30th, 2027. The extension of these provisions allows public bodies to hold their meetings remotely by providing live, adequate, alternative means of public access to the deliberations. This meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast by ACMI. Members of the public who participate via Zoom and who wish to offer public comment should be aware that they will be asked to provide their full name and address so that a complete public record of the meeting can be taken in accordance with state law. All participants of this meeting are advised that people may be listening to the meeting without offering public comment, and those people are not required to identify themselves. Any votes that are taken this evening will be conducted by roll call. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the Board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington, Massachusetts, discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy, an Algonquin word meaning swift waters, the Board hereby acknowledges that the Town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. So tonight, we have a very full agenda. In order to expedite the hearing, I'll be taking tonight's business in the following order. So we'll start with the hearings. We'll move the administrative items to the end. And then we will go in numerical order. So we'll do 20 Pond Lane first, then 29 Hemlock, 17 Brattle Place, and then 319 Appleton. I anticipate the first docket to take approximately 45 minutes and the remaining dockets to take somewhere between half hour and 45 minutes each, hopefully quicker. I cannot provide a definitive time that later items will be taken up. So if you're participating, if you are particularly interested in those items, I encourage you to check in periodically so you do not miss your hearing. With that, going to our online agenda, I'm going to move forward to item number five, which is docket 382220 Pond Lane. Before opening sites meeting for public hearings, here's some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves for themselves and to make a presentation to the Board, then request the members of the Board to ask what questions they have on the proposal. And after the Board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the Board will deliberate and vote to either continue or to close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. The final vote taken on any matter before the Board will be taken at a subsequent meeting once the written decision has been drafted and provided to the Board. The decision will then be filed with the town clerk, starting the 20-day appeal period under state law. And after that time, the applicant may proceed with their building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this Board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds in Cambridge by the applicant. So with that, ask the applicant for 20 Pond Lane. Actually, before they introduce themselves, just to give everyone a brief.
Yeah. Good evening. Good evening. Doug Troyer on behalf of the Advocate 20 Pond Line LLC. With me tonight is Nick Boyt. I believe John Wheatley is going to be on board as well. Last time we talked, we had a pretty substantive hearing. My understanding is tonight, for discussion purposes, is to kind of talk about the proposed conditions that were forwarded last week. We have reviewed them and provided certain comments and proposed edits for discussion tonight. And not sure what the best way to proceed, but I was thinking, go one by one on those conditions and kind of give you our two cents. And then answer any questions that the Board may have with regard to those and any other additional questions you may have. And then hear from the public concerning that conversation and kind of go from there. But the Chair wasn't sure what your pleasure would be tonight.
So just to recap for anyone who's joining us late, so this hearing was initially opened October 22nd. It has been continued several times. It's been extended a couple of times and was re-advertised about six weeks ago. This is a residential, this is a commercial garage in a residential district. It has, it was approved by special permit back in the 60s. It has been operating relatively continuously since that time. The current owner is looking to sell the property. The new owner is looking to continue a use that is somewhat similar to what was there before. There before the Board requesting that the Board approve a change from what would be considered a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, which the Board is allowed to do under Section 8.1 in the zoning bylaw. And so we've had substantive discussions with both the applicant and with some of the abutting neighbors. And at the end of our prior hearing, we had agreed that we would provide to both the applicant and to the abutters a list of proposed conditions. And we have received back today responses to those. And we are, so now would probably be a good time to go ahead and discuss those. So I would, so let me go ahead. Probably best if I try to share this document. So let me find it really quick. Okay. So my intention with this, so we will go through these with the applicant. And then when we get to the public comment period, I will ask the Mr. Simler, who had submitted also some concerns about the conditions to address them with the Board at that time. So with that, the first condition that we had put forward.
Mr. Chair. Would it be better to have my, because I have your conditions and then I redlined my comments on them so that you see both what the original draft was and then also what I am proposing. I can share that screen, which may make more sense.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and do that?
Okay. To share a screen. So I, what I did in my letter is, the first paragraph is just identifying that we are providing these comments. Comment one, the black and what is stricken through is the proposed conditions that the Board sent. The red line is what I am proposing as potential changes. And if possible, the condition one, if it's okay, if I can go through it and explain kind of our thoughts, is that okay? Or would you rather do it and then let me talk?
No, um, why don't you go ahead and present with your.
Okay.
Discuss from there.
So condition one was, commercial activities are limited to the hours noted in the Town Noise Abatement Bylaw. We agree to this condition and understand that from our view of the bylaw, that it's Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, weekends and holidays. We are amendable to that. We believe that that is consistent with how it has been historically used as well. And we are in compliance with those noise bylaws. Again, just so the Board is aware, this is a, this is a storage of materials and equipment and vehicles of the hardware store on an as-needed basis. So this isn't something which is going to be utilized on a day-to-day basis. But this at least sets the rules of the road as to what the hours would be. And we are amendable to what that, that condition is.
And just, I would just note as well that the, in the Town's Noise Abatement Bylaw, this, these hours apply to any kind of commercial operation, whether it's contractors who are working on a residential house, whether it's basically any kind of operation that is going to be making excessive noise outside. So that's, that's where these hours come from.
Yep. Uh, condition two, I kind of wanted to kind of bring, basically what we done, the size of vehicles assessing a site you had originally pursuant to the Department of Transportation classes one through three, up to 14,000 pounds of gross vehicle weight as currently in effect. We basically, like we indicated before, we're looking at, you know, pickup trucks that are over 14,000 pounds. They could potentially be over 14,000 pounds. We're also looking at box trucks, which are, you know, the similar type of vehicles in which you see UPS coming down. And the same, similar type of vehicles you see FedEx coming down and utilizing those. We envision utilizing pickup trucks and also utilizing box trucks potentially for this site. And what I thought would be the better way to approach this is, what is, when is a commercial license in Massachusetts? And focusing on Massachusetts and not the Department of Transportation Federal, I was looking at Massachusetts RMV. And in order to, to require a commercial driver's license of a vehicle in which is, you need special licenses, special training for, it needs to be 26,000 or one pound of gross vehicle weight or over to basically do. We looked at the weights and 26,000 pounds or less, basically are effective of what we are proposing to bring on through pickup trucks and potentially some box trucks. But they're going to be less than that and similar of the type of deliveries in which are already coming through these, these areas on a, on, I'm not sure on a daily basis, but when, when people are Amazon, Federal Express, UPS, things like that, these are these types of weights. Because I'm not sure if those folks actually have commercial licenses or not, but we are willing to agree that any commercial vehicle over 26,000 pound, which would require a license, would not be permitted. And we thought that that would be the better way to classify it, to give us the opportunity to, you know, less trips means a vehicle that can basically, you know, bring over the materials on an as-needed basis, which we're looking for. For limited to pickup trucks, we're looking at more trips, we're looking at more people, we're looking at more, you know, increasing that. We're just looking for a reasonable weight of trucks in which have historically been on this site. And we believe that it's consistent with other vehicle traffic that is currently on the roadway today.
So my understanding is that vehicles that would be, you access, excuse me, accessing this site would be the owner's vehicles. It would not be that.
Yes.
Outside companies are coming in with larger vehicles to deliver goods to the site.
Other than if the residential neighborhood wants to have UPS or FedEx, the resident, you know, residential, I'm assuming that UPS and FedEx are delivering stuff on the road for other people for residential uses. What we are saying here is the only vehicles that would be allowed would be the, the owner of the property and the hardware stores employees utilizing those trucks for deliveries.
Okay. So I don't know what the best, if there are members of the Board who have questions on any of these, I encourage you to please speak up as we're going through.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I do. So, and I did on number one also. So with your permission, I'd like to ask a question about, about that. This is the hours of operation. And there's a statement that the, after the applicant agreeing to that, that his understanding is what it is. And it's described there in the, in the red line. And I'm wondering what it is, we can easily say that that's what it is now and that would be true. And it's not really regulatory language, is it? Is the applicant proposing this in order to freeze those times into effect? In other words, you couldn't understand, and I did understand the Board's proposal as saying that whatever the, whatever the rules are under the bylaw.
Oh, if.
Could would follow.
Yeah, if I may.
Whether the applicant intends to do that or whether it intends to freeze the situation the way it is right now. And if there are further amendments to the bylaw, that they wouldn't, that they wouldn't.
I understand your question. Mr. Hanlon, basically, my red line is barely, is saying that we agree to that condition as proposed. And then I just, because we were having conversations, I wanted to clarify through our discussions tonight that the current hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, weekends and holidays. That's all that I was trying to do there. The condition as written without the red line is what I would anticipate going in as condition number one.
So on condition number two, is it, the last sentence is a further stating.
That's again, my notation.
Language.
Yeah, that's my notate. Basically, the way that I would propose is the size of vehicles assessing a site in connection with the commercial use is limited to vehicles with a gross vehicle weight of 26,000 or less. All loading must take place on-site, which we agree to. Loading of vehicles on the street is prohibited. Period. That's the way that, that the condition would read in the special permit. The rest of it is, again, for discussion purposes tonight.
I see. So it's essentially a note to the.
It's a note to remind me to basically have the conversation with you tonight that the reason behind why we're making the change from Department of Transportation to the, to the commercial license weight of 26,001 in making that no commercial vehicles that require a commercial license or weight over 26,000 can access the site.
Okay. And the language in the beginning, in connection with the commercial use, I take it, if I understand it correctly, it's that somebody's still going to live in the house.
Yeah. And again. Exactly. And I'm basically, this is a permit for the commercial use aspect of the site only. It's not dealing with the residential aspect of it. And I'm assuming, and I have language further down that basically says that, you know, so long as it's in compliance with the district of the, we could talk about, I have some language down clarifying that the residential use can continue so long as this is in compliance with the zoning district and blah, 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 to kind of address that.
Thank you. That's it on two for me.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Are there other questions from the Board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBlanc.
I don't particularly have a question. I guess, I question, if anything, of why we need to go into that heavy. You know, I was just looking at what a truck at 2,600, you know, gross vehicle weight is, and they get pretty big. And as we've heard testimony before from abutters, that that street's pretty narrow. And I think the vehicles of that size start to get larger than what I think us as the Board intended by this. And I agree more with the initial draft of the condition rather than the proposed change, at least with the, just talking about the gross vehicle weight part of it. I just think that it opens it up to just some larger trucks that we didn't intend when we drafted the condition. And like I said, what we've heard from the abutters in previous testimony.
And if I may, I think that, and if I may, I think that's where kind of some of the lower conditions is, is once we get into this, if there are issues with, you know, the size of vehicles coming in, there are opportunities to bring us back in and have a conversation. We need, I'm not aware of anything that restricts the size of vehicles specifically in the bylaw. Maybe I'm missing something or not, but we have to have, by limiting to 14,000, you're potentially taking away certain trucks that, pickup trucks in which we may have. I'm literally trying to be as reasonable as we possibly can by ensuring that we're not, we're not having tractor trailers coming in. We're not having those, those types of vehicles, but we got to have the ability to have a box truck, which could, doesn't really fit in with a, you know, 16 to 20. It basically is, those types of trucks tend to fall under the commercial license. So we're trying to make it as reasonable as possible. And we're willing to basically, if in fact there are, you know, if there's concerns about the size of trucks coming in and out, you know, there's an opportunity to complain to the building inspector, as in one of the conditions, to bring us back in to have a conversation. But I think we have to pick a, we have to pick a reasonable weight. And I'm taking out commercial license type of vehicles that are over and above 26,000 to make it reasonable. And they're, we've heard from one abutter as well. Not, we haven't heard from any other abutters. We heard from one abutter who just moved into the area that hasn't really seen how this site has been operated with a commercial building. And what we are representing is that this is a light use, similar to what was before. But if you're going to condition something, you need to have certain points that you do not go beyond. And I believe, given the fact that 26,000 or less is what other vehicles that are currently coming and delivering items, it is reasonable. That's kind of where we are. Like, I think we need to get into it and open up the door for further comments if there are issues down, down the road.
Mr. Chairman. While we move on to condition number three then.
Okay.
Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dupont.
Yeah. So I, I don't know the relevance of the commercial license and I don't want to really get into that. I think that the question that I'd like to have answered is, I think that it's being stated that the trucks, which would be visiting this are the trucks that are currently owned by, by the hardware store.
Yes.
I'm not familiar with the weights of trucks. I don't know what it is that a pickup truck weighs when it is, you know, carrying goods, hardware goods back and forth. And 26,000 does seem rather large to me. Maybe that's what the standard FedEx truck is, but I have no way of knowing that. So.
For an example, just for an example, you.
Mr. Chairman, please.
I apologize. I apologize.
I'm not finished. So I, I feel like I'd like a little bit of clarification with respect to what it is that we're being told. Either they are the trucks that are owned by the hardware store and they have specific weight, or you're looking for more potential weight. And the idea of having to come back in here to address problems because of the potential abuse of this is not something that I'm actually keen on doing. So I'd like to set standards that are reasonable, but also I'd like them to match what it is that's currently the condition of what the weight of vehicles is that's owned by the hardware concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. So let's go ahead and move on to condition number three, please.
Uh, condition number three, in essence, the activities that may take place in the site are limited to the following storage of sale. You had Wanamaker, which is the sole, is the name of the, one of the hardware stores. WR Shattuck and Company is the parent company of the hardware stores and is in essence going to be the tenant of the owner who's renting, who's leasing out the garage. So I changed that to be correct. Storage of vehicles owned by, and because they're going to own the property, he's going to want to be able to store a personal car if he wants. So owned by the owner of the property and WR Shattuck. Minor service of vehicles owned by the owner of the property and WR Shattuck and general office functions. So in essence, I, I agree with the proposed condition. Just wanted to clarify the exact name and also add the fact that there is also, the owner of the property should be able to utilize this garage for a storage of residential things. And that's why I added this last paragraph. Nothing herein shall preclude the accessory garage building on the property to also be used for any residential storage purposes permitted within the R2 zoning district, including without limitation to the storage of personal property, household goods, yard equipment, and similar items customarily associated with residential use. That's what the historical use has been. As, as we know, this property, this garage was rented out to folks to utilize certain parts of it, but other parts of it had, you know, household goods like lawnmowers and things like that. And I just wanted to be, since we're being very specific, I just wanted to be very clear in this as well.
Any question or comment from the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
We'll get to, I mean, we'll get to the main thing here, but I'm just curious, the storage of personal property and then household goods and all these various other things in the list also pretty much coincides with all the things that the hardware store sells because it primarily is selling to residential people. And there's nothing in this language which links the residential stuff. Like you could have 80 lawnmowers in there if you wanted to, according to this language, as long as they were owned by the owner. And it seems, I mean, I think your intent is what it was above, that, that it isn't the nature of the thing as being residential or not, it's the nature of the use being residential or not. And that means sort of one lawnmower or most two. And it seems to me that if that's what the intent is, we need to be a little clearer about it.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Anything else from the Board?
I mean, could it just, I think it just had, the words residential storage could have exactly the meaning I'm looking for, but that's not 100% clear. I mean, storage of residential things is one thing. Residential storage may be something else and that may be a place to work with.
Okay. Let's move on to number four, please.
Number four, we're in complete agreement with. Storage of materials is limited to those allowed under the Storage Use Group and State Building Code, with the exception of aircraft hangar, dry boat storage, cell storage, public parking, and any items not offered for sale. And the only change I had was the appropriate entity. And we, we agree with that. That gives a very good list of items of, that are similar of nature of a hardware store. And we think it's, it's a fair, fair reference so that there is particulars of what type of items are permitted, what are not.
Thank you. Anything from the Board? Number five.
Number five, again, we agree with this condition. As we indicated, we're not looking to have retail sales, retail deliveries, or retail transfers taking place on the property at all.
Perfect. Uh, number six.
Again, we talked about this last time. Signage will be limited to that allowed in residential sign district in a zoning bylaw. And we are agreeable to that condition as well.
Anything for the Board? Uh, number seven.
At no time shall more than four people be employed at this location. We agree with that. Basically, we believe that four is an appropriate number for when, when the trucks do come to load and unload, that they'll probably not be any more than, than four, four people. Client wanted me to, you know, basically try and get it up to six to be 100% safe. But upon further reflection, we believe it's reasonable if, for the truck that comes, the potential of four people be employed at that location at any, any given time. So we're, we're in agreement with that.
Great. Thank you. Questions in the Board? Number eight.
Uh, number of vehicle trips in connection with the commercial use of the property is not to exceed. We bumped it up to 10 trips per day, although again, we don't envision more than, again, this is not going to be a use that is every single day from nine to five use. This is on an as-needed basis for extra storage for the, for, for, for the hardware stores. But given the amount that comes over, we're trying to, you know, be reasonable in, in the amount on, on. In the amount on on the day in which it could come, um, we want to have the ability to, um. We we felt that ten trips per day was was very reasonable, um, but this is just on our part.
How many, how many retail stores um does the owner currently have?
Got three, I believe. And he has storage uh for each one of these, this again, this is uh, this is. This is a unique piece of property that allows him to store uh some personal stuff and as well as in the need of his business if he. If he has the ability to store some extra stuff for the hardware stores, he's gonna lease it out to uh to the hardware stores to basically do that on an as needed basis. Similar to exactly what has been going on there for, ever since my client has actually purchased the property.
Thank you, um, questions for the board?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Le Blank.
Um, so that would be about a trip every hour at ten trips a day. I was just curious if they really envisioned the need at any point for that many trips in a single day.
We do not envision that need, but. As we are being as specific as we possibly can here, uh, we wanna have, we we don't want to have to come in for. Uh, s- special person, permission if we have ten trucks, ten, instead of a box truck coming over, we've got ten pickup trucks coming over. Um, to basically do it, but again, we do not envision this happening and we definitely don't have envision this. Happening on a daily basis, it's on an as needed basis only.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon.
So suppose. One of the things that sometimes happens in environmental regulation under the Clean Air Act is they say. Uh, level that you're exceeding the air quality standard and then you say that. This is the standard and it may not be exceeded more than X number of times a year typically. Um, so what if we said here that uh. Uh, something like six, but. Never more than ten up to five days a year. Or, you know, these are arbitrary numbers, but I'm, what I'm trying to do here is to say the basic standard would be the lower number. But you have a certain number of exceedances you're allowed before you're in violation.
Your chair.
Uh, so I I basically saying, uh, it would be, we're allowed to have no more than six per day. Uh, and the the suggestion is to say no more and no more than ten. Uh, five times a year, something along those lines.
Something along those lines, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that would be acceptable, I'd have to confirm, but I think that that, I think that that would be acceptable.
Great, thank you, um, number nine.
Uh, number nine, uh, so I kept this, I just reworded it uh to be more. Consistent and the main reason for this is that you have to remember, I'm getting a special permit before the sale of this property, so I need to basically. Uh, if the sale does not ultimately go through, this permit will not be recorded. So I basically said, this decision shall be recorded with Millsix County Registry of Dutes within sixty days after certification, no appeal. And a true copy of said recording shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals. Failure to do show shall render this special permit null and void, upon recording with the registry of this special permit, this special permit supersedes all previous grants. So I'm basically just uh identifying the issue uh and u- utilizing what uh I think is is fair language. And it's in and and it is consistent with the law.
Okay, and effectively it does do the same thing as what initially had said, which is that. Um, that the that once this is is fully approved and in place, it supersedes anything that came before.
Yes, yes, but given the, uh, because we are in a purchase and sell agreement still, I wanted to clarify it for all parties. Including the buyer, the seller and and the board and and the butters.
Any questions from the board? Now we'll move on to number ten.
Uh, this one I think is uh, we're we're basically, we are taking the time and effort here to really specifically identify what use is allowed on the site. And uh, why have stricken what you have indicated uh that. Um, and I think the biggest concern the butters have is if the use in which is granted ever is extended, they need to come before the board. Or if it's ever changed, um, they need to come before the board uh for amendments to it. And that's basically what I suggested, if it uses to be expanded beyond what is granted here and it will be considered a change of use and require review by the zoning board of appeals. And I'm happy to tweak that any way the board sees fit. Uh, but what we would like is, I mean, it's also a value to the property. If Mr. Wheatley wants to sell this uh to another hardware store or if his hardware. Uh, if he, if he sells his hardware store to somebody else and that owner wants to purchase the property to keep the same thing. It leaves open the opportunity for him to have a valuable asset to sell, but at the same time, it gives the protection that if anything changes. Uh, from the use or if the if the commercial use is expanded, um. It avoids what happened here is years go by without people not coming back to the board, this opens up the opportunity and clarity. That uh people need to come to the board if they change their use, uh, to fix things and that's, I think that's what we're trying to get to and that that's kind of what I'm trying to propose here.
Yeah, cuz I think what the, certainly my intention was that, um. Whoops, you just went past number ten.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad. Um, I was seeing what was next and forgot that everyone's looking.
Uh, so we were, so. I think what the board is concerned about is, you know, part of the zoning bylaw is to try to bring uses. Back in conformance with what the zoning bylaw requires, um, and so the board I think is looking for. Um. And what we had written previously was to make it clear that, um. What the that the use that we are providing here is not intended to be. Uh, you know, we're trying to limit it in terms of how long it's in effect. So that the the owner who's purchasing the property has full, you know, has full use of it, can use it exactly as they want. Um, but that. The special permit would not transfer with the property. Um, and that would, if the, when the property transfers and somebody is looking to do something, they would. We would need to go through a similar process to this again, if they were looking to.
Right.
Do a commercial use at this site or alternately the town may change the, you know, may change the zoning underneath it and then, you know, it doesn't matter.
I hear what you're saying, um, and and this may be, you know, just a. Wordsmithing on how the hell they ultimately make this work, uh, I think they, right now, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use that uh. They can continue so long as it doesn't, is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Well, due to the fact that they are changing what the pre-existing non-conforming use is, they are required by law to basically come to you and do so. Uh, no matter what, and if in fact, uh, this property owner uh changes this use. At any point in time, whether if they sell it to someone else who wants to do the same, same use with with the hardware store or something along those lines. Uh, that's a valuable asset uh to which they have. Uh, they wouldn't have to come and forward to board to do it, but if they wanted to change the use of it or if there was issues with it, then uh they would have to come and forward to board. Uh, but I understand what the board is saying and if this is a, if this is, if this is, I guess I just need to hear if this is a uh, this is a. This is a condition in which is is non-negotiable, um, then, you know, that's something for us to take into consideration. Because at the end of the day, we're all trying to, we're trying to get to the same point is that. We want to be able to do this, we want to be able to be able to sell this property sometime down the road and if he's able to sell to another hardware store owner, which is probably very unlikely. Uh, he would like to be able to sell the property, but if it's to somebody else who's gonna use it differently, then they need to come before the board. Uh, similar to what we are doing now, um, so I was just, I'm trying not to lose that. Uh, ability to continue that the type of use in which we're, we are being very specific of uh going forward, but if they ever change it, then they need to come to the board. Instead of doing it on the sell of the property.
Got it, other questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dupont.
So it's, um, I do understand the point of view of the of the applicant and I I. I certainly sympathize with it, it's just that I think what we are trying to do. On the board is to essentially put the onus on any new owner to come in to essentially state. That they are going to continue the use as it is, as it presently exists when they do come to us. And assuming that there haven't been problems. Um, with, you know, with the the property and with the business. Um, I would assume that we would be sympathetic and would be willing to continue. Uh, and grant the uh appropriate special permit if in fact, uh, you know, rules and regulations and bylaws. All are the same as they uh currently exist, so I I just think it's an important. Uh, protection for us to be able. To essentially say, you know, come on in and let's have a discussion as opposed to having somebody buy the property. Use the property where we're not really monitoring and we don't necessarily, we haven't had the conversation. With the new owners as to what the, you know, guidelines are. And if it's not a hundred percent identical, then there are going to be some departures from whatever is set forth in this special permit. And I think we need to know about those, so I think it's important for us to keep it as it was originally uh worded.
Thank you, Mr. Han, Mr. Dupont.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I wanted to point out that it's condition three that determines what the allowed uses are. So you've got to find the use in con- in condition three and. When I look at condition three, it has certain uses involving the owner, which presumably is any owner. And then some others involving Shattuck. Uh, and I read condition three, maybe this isn't. Is applying it in a, in a different way because of a different circumstance, but. But just changing the identity of the hardware stores. That are going to use this is a change in use. Because this is specific to this particular hardware store, set of hardware stores and Mr. Troyer is 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 carefully. Restated those to make sure that that it's right. Um, but the way I read the condition as it's written right now is that. Uh, there would be, it would be a change of use if so, if some other hardware stores or even more of some other kinds of stores. Were uh were substituted for the uh for the Shattuck ones. Now, the owner is a little bit different because the owner is a generic word, it doesn't refer to the prospective owner or any particular owner, but. Uh, but just to that particular person, but. Um, in working with what it means to define its change of use, we should look at carefully what the language is in condition three because that. That would, that's what defines the the allowed current use.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon.
With regarding condition ten, I I I can follow up and 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 see if it is, if it is something which we can ultimately agree to. Because I hear the concerns that the board has, I think the board understands my concerns as well, uh, but I think reality is reality and. And we just want to make sure that whatever commercial use goes in there, that it's uh, that it is reviewed by the board going forward, so. Uh, let me talk with my client further about that, get back.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I just want to sort of stress that underneath all of this is a policy of amortizing non, non-conforming uses. And we're already dealing with a use that has been here for fifty years, right? Sixty years and, you know, that's a pretty long time for it to stick out here, we're now thinking about. Uh, providing for another period of time and then, um, so. You know, there will come a point when we'll, and and I believe it is true today that if this were new. If you just were were applying straight out today to have this use in an R two area, we would not be able as a matter of law. To provide, to give you what you wanted, so in effect, you know, to some extent, this is kind of keeping things going. Notwithstanding a town policy to eventually put an end to these things and to be sure, the town has not been in a hurry to do that here. Um, but you should realize and everybody should realize that that is part of what's what's weighing on us. Is that you've got something that's an arch property, uh, and that we're looking at at a. A use which we, I think, can generally be considered inconsistent with that. But extend it out now sixty years and and possibly for another, another ten or fifteen or twenty years. And uh, that's a pretty long time for a non-conforming use to s- to stand out there.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon, uh, while we move on to number eleven.
Number eleven, I think uh my change is because I think it's this duplicative of the following standard condition, I just changed it. Complaints regarding the operation of the property are to be submitted to the building inspector per the section of bylaw. And let the bylaw basically procedures outline in that uh follow. Uh, I think the rest of it is uh, is more uh than necessary and I think we should only be bound by what the bylaw. If there is complaints, they go to, they go to the building inspector, they file it and they follow the procedures of the bylaw. And my recommendation is to be simple and straight on that.
Anything further from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, so what, what was considered here is, the the important thing about condition eleven as it was originally written is to provide notice. That one potential remedy. Uh, for a violation of the bylaw that at least, but a suitable violation of the bylaw. The one possible remedy of that is invalidation of this with is the uh, uh, the the. Is invalidating or re- repealing the uh, uh, the special permit. Um, it is a matter really in some ways of just putting you on on notice.
Yeah.
But not just talking about going to, going to uh, the court to litigate it and so forth, that the board reserves the right to. Uh, invalidate or to repeal the uh, the the, the ultimate permission. Uh, in the event of of uh, in the event of a complaint that seems to warrant that relief.
Again, I think, um, again, if I may, uh, above when we were talking about. Uh, where was it? The hours of uh, the the noise abatement, basically keeping it just to that, uh, cuz it could change over time. I mean, three point one lays out that I'm notified, I'm I am obligated to abide by three point one. Uh, if a complaint comes in, it lays out the process, it could change over time and we're basically being, we're basically saying we are, we are bound by it. And uh, but I feel like if it's the inspector's opinion, conditions of the permit are not being followed, this permit may be reviewed, revised or revoked by the board. I feel like that's giving more than what three point one has and I think that's unfair to this applicant. If this is not something in which is provided a standard to other applicants. Uh, I think uh, we are on notice of three point one of of any complaints and in particularly standard condition twelve. Lays out exactly the procedures that should be followed and I'm just basically saying, I'm I'm trying to keep it fair and I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep it. Um, uh, simple, cuz I don't think the billing inspector can make that decision, I think it's ultimately, um. I'm not necessarily s- certain if a billing inspector on a use can, I think he can issue a cease and desist order. If we're not in violation, but we come back to the zoning board of appeals to basically uh, to contest that and so on and so forth. But the the section three point one of the zoning bylaw lays out those those processes and condition number twelve. Is a standard condition that I I think is, I think eleven's duplicative, but I'm happy to leave it that complaints regarding the operation. Are to be submitted to the building inspector per se- per section three point one of zoning bylaw, so that if there are complaints. People know exactly where to go and what process to follow in order, in order to proceed with it.
Thank you. Anything further from the board on eleven? Move on to twelve.
I think twelve and thirteen are both standard conditions uh that you put in the majority and uh we obviously uh agree to this condition. And I think it was uh indicated to us that uh there's really no negotiation on these anyway, these are standard conditions and we're, we believe they're fair.
Thank you, are there any further questions uh or comments from the board in regards to the conditions as a whole?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Little Blank.
Um, I know as we've sort of gone through some of these, there's been a couple of conditions where. Um, Mr. Troy wanted to confer with his client, uh, I was wondering if he might be able to do that tonight. So we can sort of maybe try and wrap, wrap up the this hearing tonight, um. I think that was sort of our intention is to try and wrap this up tonight, um, so I just wanted to see if that was possible.
Um, I am not seeing Mr. Wheatley on this call, I think he was traveling uh today unfortunately. Um, I believe that uh, based on some of the conversation, it seems, I'm not sure where the board is on tweaking. Uh, some of these conditions also uh for further review or not. Uh, I feel like we can, we can, um, if in fact, we are looking to press forward and we're looking at conditions. I I don't see why we can't start drafting a decision for review and approval at the next meeting, uh, uh, at that time.
So the only thing was that if the board was to close the hearing tonight, we would not be able to make any new testimony on anything, so we would.
Yeah.
Positions to um, to accept new information, so I think that's where this real blank was going that. The board, the intention was that we would close.
Uh, yeah, that was my intention as well and I I believe that there's, there seems to be, um. A little bit of tweaking, but I'm not one hundred percent sure where the board is on on some of these conditions as as a rewrite or not, um, at this point.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Um. Unless there's anything further from the board, I was going to go ahead and. Um, open the meeting for public comment at this time. So uh, public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Uh, members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Uh, members of the public who wish to speak can digitally raise their hand using the button on the react tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the chair, asked to give your full name and address for the record and given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. And once all public questions and comments have been addressed. Um, the public comment period will be closed. Uh, so with that, um. I see one hand raised, which is uh, Paul Creighton. If you could go ahead and give us your name and address uh, and address the board.
Hi, thank you everyone for um, listening to my comments. My name is Paul Creeden. I live at uh, eleven Pond Lane. Um, diagonally across from the uh, from twenty Pond Lane. Um, I'll I'll state my comments. Um, please tell me if I'm going on too long and I'll, I'll wrap it up. Um, so I just wanted to to start by taking issue with a comment made by Mr. Troyer. He stated that. He's only heard from one of butter about concerns about traffic safety in the neighborhood. Um, that's not true. I've expressed my concerns, my family's concerns. In writing and within meetings and pub- in comments about the misuse of sidewalks and um, streets by commercial vehicles. It's. I'm very concerned about this and it's been the reason I attend these meetings and I'm so concerned about it. So. Um, I just want to make sure that that is known, that it's not just one of butter who is concerned about this. Um, there are multiple. Um, I've lived at at eleven Pond Lane since twenty nineteen, so I've. Lived near the the property in question for quite some time and um, so I just want to make that clear. Um, I I was happy to see the uh, proposed special permit conditions that were submitted by the Board of Appeals. I think that they. Reflected um, a reasonable approach to allowing this commercial use within a residential area. And protecting the residents from commercial activity that's unsafe. Um, I disagree with several of the edits that are proposed by the applicant. Um, I'll summarize my concerns in writing prior to a final decision, seeing that I was only able to see them today. But um, I'll just give you some uh, opinions that I have um, based on what I've seen. So. With regard to condition two, the increase in the truck size. So that's a significant increase in size from fourteen thousand to twenty six thousand in. In in size, I understand that that's the maximum allowed for uh, not holding a CDL. Um, it's, it's important to note the UPS truck is the maximum width allowed on a residential street. Um, and this type of truck cannot safely make deliveries to this property. The pond lane is less than twenty feet wide. It's nineteen feet wide at the corner in which it turns. At which twenty pond lane is located. Um, as someone who sits, you know, I work remotely three days a week and I sit looking at twenty pond lane all day long. Um, trucks are not parking in that driveway to make deliveries. They're parking on the street, they're parking on the sidewalk. Um, I think a comparison to a UPS FedEx truck is misleading. Um, primarily because a UPS truck stops to deliver three Amazon packages. And they get back in their vehicle and they drive away. If they're not dropping off snow blowers, they're not dropping off, you know, twenty pallets of mulch in which it requires. Um, you know, maybe a a forklift to take it out of the truck. I don't see a way in which a truck of that size can safely navigate that turn to pull into the into the driveway. As someone who lives here, I've seen plenty of commercial vehicles get stuck under that bridge. And when they realize that they can't navigate it, they rely on the city's um, parking lot where the where the crew team. Uh, practices to turn around. Or they'll park down the street in order to make that delivery. It's, it's a different use case. Um, Mr. Troyer organized the meeting um, with some of the abutters and the applicant, which I found very helpful. And I was um, happy with the outcome of that meeting. Sort of understanding how they intended to use the property. Um, my understanding was that it was going to be small trucks making. Small deliveries for long-term storage. It wasn't going to be trucks of this size trying to make deliveries on a street. Um, so you know, it, these edits sort of seem to be. Counter to what we had discussed at that meeting with the the potential owner. So that's my biggest concern with condition number two. Um, condition number eight, ten deliveries a day does feel excessive. Um, I understand that you you're going to ask for as many as possible to allow for. Um, you know, use cases in which you need to make ten deliveries, but that no longer falls within the category of long-term. You know, storage of excess materials for hardware store. That feels like a commercial oper- operation in which there's constant traffic in and out. Especially if you're going to allow vehicles of that size to be constantly going up and down our street, making deliveries. Um, I think it just makes the street less safe um, for, you know, the residents that live here. Um, who only have one operable sidewalk to use. Um, condition number ten, um, I I strongly believe that any change in ownership or change of use. By renting the property should require a further review. Um, my biggest concern throughout this entire process is is basically riding into. Into the zoning law that any future use can follow these conditions. Um, you know, it gives, I was relieved to know who the potential owner would be because. I understand how they would use the property and I would have someone to reach out to if I had concerns directly. My concern would be if this is written into the zoning law, they then start renting the property in five years and um. You know, the change of use is different and then we have to file complaints and that sort of thing. So that's my biggest concern there. And then finally, um, I do not support this petition without a mechanism for, this is condition number eleven. Um, I don't support the petition without a mechanism for revising or revoking the special permit. Um, I understand that you can go and you can make complaints, but I think that. The building inspector really shouldn't be the one that can respond to violations of the special permit. Um, I understand that 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 can be a challenge, but I think that there needs to be a mechanism for. Um, revoking at least temporarily the use of the special permit if those violations exist. So that's. That's my concern there. Um, and then finally, I was, you know, prepared to fully support this. Um, petition after the conversation that we had with the the future buyer and the applicant. Um, with these proposed amendments, I would not be supporting um, this applicant and I will submit that in writing unless. The um, conditions that were um, proposed by the Board of Appeals are are what goes through. Um, I feel like some of the edits that made to these conditions um, would make the property and the street less safe for us residents. So thank you for the the time to speak and I'm happy to hand it back to you.
Thank you very much. Um, next on our list, um, it's Nicholas Boit.
Good evening. How are you?
Good thanks. How are you?
I'm well, thanks. Um, I just wanted to address, I'm not going to get into legalese. That's what, that's Doug's.
Mr. Boy, I just wanted to confirm, you're the current owner, correct?
I am the, we are the current owner. That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So there's a couple of things I wanted to address because there, I I listened to the conversation and um. The, the first one is, is the size of the vehicle and um, I just want to explain this because. It appears to me that even the board members don't seem to be too clear on what a twenty six thousand pound truck is, and I'd like to explain it. So twenty six thousand pound truck is a box truck, okay? Um, no, it's not a UPS truck, uh, but I'm sure if Michael or one of the other. Owners on the street gets a refrigerator delivered or a stove or something else or a piece of furniture from Jordan's Furniture. It's going to arrive in a twenty six foot box truck. They are going to park on their sidewalk in front of. That neighbor's house to us where we have to look at the truck. And what we're proposing is a twenty six foot box truck. Does in fact fit in the driveway because we had two of them there when we moved out. And the twenty six foot truck backed into the driveway, unloaded everything from the garage and part of the house, backed out, and then the second truck backed in. If you read what Doug is proposing, he's proposing that a twenty six foot box truck would only be allowed to access the property. Meaning in the driveway, which it can do. I had a CDL.
It's the weight, it's not, it's not feet, it's the weight.
I understand that, but I'll give another example. If someone on the street goes to U-Haul and rents a twenty four foot truck, that is a box truck. Anybody can drive that, anybody can drive it on Pond Lane. But that box truck will fit in our driveway. It probably won't fit in anyone else's driveway, but to the point of the use of this property, it will fit in the driveway and that's the intention of the paragraph. The second piece is the number of deliveries. And this is a tough one because I think Doug and the board already came up with a solution of. You know, up to ten a day. Maybe only five days a year or something to that effect, which he's going to have to confirm with John, but. In all of our off conversations with, not with the board, it's like, there's going to be days where there's no activity. And then there's going to be days when they got to bring down some equipment and drop it off. And so if they're bringing it and pickup trucks, it's going to require more. Activity, whereas if they can bring it down in a box truck or have a vendor deliver it in a box truck, it's going to pull in the driveway, it's going to be offloaded and the box truck's going to be gone. I understand the traffic issue on Pond Lane. It never has been an issue related to twenty Pond Lane. Even when we had our cleaning company, even when we had our maintenance company, even when the mechanics were there. And they ran, and they were there for forty years, whether it was approved by this board or not. They had a dozen cars in the driveway and it was probably a far more impactful use than what we're proposing now. When we had it, our trucks rolled at six in the morning, they came back at three in the afternoon and they got parked. That was it. And I think the majority of the neighbors on the street, of which there is probably fifty by the time you talk to the building next door and all the other neighbors. And I've got two neighbors that are upset and I respect that. However, we are not proposing a use. That is any more impactful than what has been there in the past. In fact, it is far less impactful. I ripped up half the parking lot and replanted it. It's just a driveway now. There's not even a place to put a lot of vehicles. It looks like a residential house. Everything has to be pulled in, taken off and stored in the garage and then the vehicle has to leave. It's a very benign use and I personally feel that. An overbearing hand on this hurts the value of the property and impacts it. It is a commercial use. It was provided for by the town. Both in nineteen sixty-three and nineteen sixty-seven. And I'm a little concerned about the board's tone that they want to be able to remove these things long term. I respect that, but. For those of us that own the property, you're directly impacting our ability to sell in value. So anyway, I just, that's all I had. I want to be clear on the truck issue because the truck issue. I don't think is an issue at all. I think that um, if we can't bring twenty six foot box trucks in our driveway. Then is the board going to restrict twenty six foot box trucks from delivering basic household items on the street to our neighbors? That would be, that would be fair, okay? I understand the frustration. When a box truck comes on the street, they pull onto the sidewalk, there is nowhere to park. I'm sure that Michael's had a refrigerator delivered. I'm sure that Paul had a refrigerator delivered. It's just the nature of the street, but when stuff gets delivered to our property, other than the day that we moved out. Which we had two trucks there and that was an anomaly. And they had to put one in the driveway and the other one did park on the sidewalk. One day out of ten years that we owned the property. So that's why I, if I sound a little upset, it's because I don't think we're seeing the real picture here. The real picture is that. This is going to be a storage use, it's going to be relatively light. You've got a good business owner in town that runs two successful businesses. It's simply looking to store some materials there. And some of his own personal items, no different than what we did. The property's been improved from basically an eyesore to a rather good-looking piece of real estate, if I do say so myself. And the traffic on the street has nothing to do with twenty Pond Lane. I think the board should be looking at, and the neighbors should be looking at the Arlington Crew, which creates traffic jams. And yes, other deliveries that go into the bridge, that happens, that that's part of it. The fact that the Boys and Girls Clubs and all their vans come in and out, the fact that the street is a cut through from Pleasant Street, it's a cut through on on uh, maps. During traffic hours. It's not twenty Pond Lane. It's not us that's creating the problem. The street in and of itself is the.
Nick, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list, uh, we have Lawrence Keefe.
My name's Lawrence Keefe. I'm seventy-five years old. I've lived in this neighborhood and I live at ten Pond Lane. Uh, what I've heard tonight is, in a way, great news. I've been here since the oil company was there. By the way, oil trucks were kept in that garage and were able to pull out without a problem. And I've been there when the repair trucks were there, in the cars, where you, what you heard at night. With this new program, what you're going to have is nobody's going to be coming in there after six o'clock at night, won't be coming in overnight. You won't hear them until the morning. And we've also survived when there used to be a plumbing supply place there where trucks were going constantly. Uh, one of the biggest problems with Pond Lane is ways puts that on there all the time. As a cut through from Pond Lane, from Mass Ave to skip Arlington Center. That seems to be a problem. Uh, also. Um. Over the years. This is probably the best thing for the neighborhood as far as that went. Before there was a plumbing supply place, there was a window company. It's quieted down. Another thing to take advantage is at twelve Pond Lane, many times you have moving trucks that are there. They fill up in front of twelve Pond Lane, in front of my house, the ten Pond Lane. They'll be there for eight hours, moving people in and out of the apartment building. So uh, without going any further, I feel this is a great thing, a better thing for the neighborhood than it has been. The building is much more better shaped than it was ten years ago. It was in bad condition and it's been fixed up. So I hope this will go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list is Michael Semiter.
All right. Um, this is Michael Semiter. I'm uh, the owner of fifteen Pond Lane, right across the street of twenty Pond Lane. Um. Today's meeting went a little bit different than I had thought it would. Um, and honestly, also, when I first read. Um, kind of the remarks and revisions provided by uh, Mr. Troyer uh, this afternoon, I was very surprised. And honestly, it felt like a slap in the face. Um, after we had an interesting conversation um, with the current owners and with the future to be owner. Um, we had, or I had the impression that there is very passive use. Uh, proposed and in the future, there's going to be passive use. Looking at the revisions. With box trucks of twenty six thousand pounds, ten times a day, on weekends, on holidays. Uh, up until six uh, PM uh, all days of, uh, all hours of the day. Uh, this kind of really shocked me to read in terms of uh, the extent of use that is going to be written down. And what is going to be legally approved compared to what uh, people have been saying verbally to us into our face. Uh, in addition to that, I would like to uh, also outline today. I've heard multiple times that um. I took a note, uh, sorry, one more, I took a note of that. I want to. Really make sure that I get this right. One of butter that hasn't really seen how the site was used before. I found this kind of condescending. Um, to kind of um, call me out like this, um, that I haven't seen how the site was used before. Honestly, it doesn't really matter how it was used before. It was used before illegally without a permit. That's what is on the record. And I think what I'm mostly concerned about is how it's going to be used and to which extent is it going to be used in the future and going forward. And the board made also a comment by saying that uh, they would like to kind of rein in. Uh, the commercial users at the site as much as you can, uh, to kind of correct for the errors that were made in the past. Uh, this application and this proposed use today is a tenfold expansion of the use. There's additional users when it comes to vehicle maintenance, which was never approved before, uh, which is now going to be asked for. Uh, there is ten deliveries per day being requested. Box trucks, uh, ten times the size of what was previously approved. Previously approved was just one pickup truck. By the way, which in the sixties was much smaller than in today's terms. And if the board doesn't mind, I have a few pictures that I want to share actually. To give everybody a reference of what a twenty six thousand pound truck in our street looks like. Is it okay to share my screen?
Yes, um, Mr. Rollson, can you give him the ability to share?
All set.
Thanks.
All right. So this. So this is, I think, a twenty-four foot box truck. Not even twenty-six foot, like it would even be bigger. This is one of the streets uh, of the trucks that ended up getting lost in our street. Uh, not knowing that they can't pass through this underpass here. So clearly they had to back up into um the um neighboring um, um, property of the town in order to get out of there, causing kind of quite some turmoil with other traffic. And this in the, in the middle of the Ford, that's a regular pickup truck. As you can see already for reference, the size differences, how narrow the street is and how quickly it can come uh, uh to a problem uh, in this street. And this is one of those trucks that are being proposed, just for everybody to have a visual of what the size is that is being requested. And I have a heart, I, I really, I don't know how a pickup truck is going to turn into this driveway here. Uh, safely without um, running over the uh, the curbs and so on. So just to have a visual reference of what the the, the truck size is that cannot maneuver in the street. All right, I'm gonna stop sharing here. Um, in addition, I really have concerns with the not only with the frequency of, of um uh, how many um, deliveries are going to be accepted uh, per day, but also for the operating hours. Um, I think uh, the um, noise abatement bylaws have been designed for the specific uses within a specific district, right? As a resident, I should only be concerned with residential noise in a residential area, right? And that's what the uh, noise abatement bylaws are for. If there's any other specific use, uh, the noise abatement bylaws are simply not designed for that. They don't, they don't account for that. And Mr. Klein, I think you also mentioned earlier that there's going to be contractors working in this area. Yes, they do. They do on permits. They do this temporarily. They don't do this ten times a day on holidays every day of the year. Um, so that's what my main concern is really that the hours of operations need to be limited drastically. And my proposal is between ten AM and four PM of the day. Um, and not on weekends and not on holidays. Uh, because this is not a residential noise. This is uh, commercial use that should not be there in the first place. Um, and then I think I also heard Mr. Boyd mention um, property values, which is in a town like Arlington always a great topic. Um, uh, my property value is negatively impacted when there is um, commercial activities across the street. So there is some negative impacts already on property values. And I would also like to outline when it comes to potential impact on sales prices. People who don't have the interest in commercial use of the property might buy the property as well. We don't know. We don't, um, I don't know if Mr. Boyd advertised it to those buyers as well. Maybe there's someone who wants to play pickleball in the garage and use it completely residentially. That's an, and buyer that is very valid use. Uh, in addition to that, the property has been used without a permit um over decades. So it has been used, I'm sure there were um profits being made off the property without a permit. So saying now that there is going to be an impact on the property value. And yeah, I, I don't really sympathize with this because they already profited over this uh, for multiple years and decades. Um, so yeah, I wish the meeting today would have gone a little bit differently because I really had a good feeling after the meeting um, uh, that we had uh, a few weeks ago, um, just among ourselves. But with those current proposals, those are, those go way beyond uh, anything that I had expected. And um, I think also one last thing that I want to point the board's attention to is I would like to request the um, the clarification of the use classification and the board's authority to even extend the um a special permit for uh, the proposed uses uh, according to the bylaws. Um, I have it on the last page of my of my submitted letter. Um, and I hope the board had the opportunity to review this um, and also provide some clarification as to how they think that this classification or what type of use it mostly aligns with in the bylaws. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, we'll come back to your question later, but first, uh, we have um, next on our list is uh, John Cronin.
Yes, good evening. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Uh, my name is John Stephen Cronin. Live on Wyman Terrace. I abut the, I almost abut the property. Like Mr. Keith, I'm a lifelong resident of the neighborhood. And I'm very familiar with, with the, with the property and its prior uses. I wanna compliment Mr. Troyer on the work he's done. I, I understand the the um, the numbers he's put on his uh, proposal are the upside, are the exception, not the rule. Um, I don't think you're gonna see ten vehicles a day coming in and out of that garage. You might see them occasionally, you might see them uh, depending on the weather occasionally, but I don't think there'll be any more traffic to that building than what you get on a daily basis from, from UPS or Amazon or the postal service. And I, I have to believe that getting a, a, a large truck is gonna be the exception, not the rule. Um, the garage is big, but not that big. Um, it's not um, there's only so much that can fit there and I'm sure that uh, the hardware store has their own storage at their location. So I, I'm, I'm supporting this and I'm, 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 I'm on the same line with uh, Mr. Keith, that it's a good use of the property. It looks better than it did before. And I think the only good thing is gonna come from it. And I don't think it's gonna be a disruption to the neighborhood. I know more than regular deliveries and um and the delivery of furniture and fixtures to apartments. Um, so I I hope this can move along and, and, and come to a conclusion as soon as possible. Um, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak to this? Uh, we have Mr. Moore. Steve Moore?
Yes, thank you. Here's Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Uh, I've, I've gotta say, the uh, the views being offered tonight are uh, far more uh, complete, I guess I would say, in terms of the breadth of the horizon than we've heard before on this uh, particular case. And I appreciate that. I appreciate uh, all the things that folks uh, that are abutters, neighbors and extra parties have been offering. Um, I would, I'd like to uh, make two points. Uh, first about the conditions being uh, offered by Mr. Troyer. Um, I, I think in terms of condition uh, eleven, the one that talks about revocation, um, a potential compromise if one is uh, interested in such a thing might be to say the building inspector in consultation with the zoning board of appeals to make sure that uh, that you folks are involved if a complaint situation starts to develop around the, the potential use of property. Um, I don't know if that would, that would work or not, but uh, it is, it is a possibility. I, I think the idea of revocation uh, probably does still need to be included. I, I think um, which, which kind of leads to my second point. Uh, which was that I appreciate uh, what Mr. Hanlon had to say about the evolution of use over time. It's clear that this was permitted, uh, or odd uses of it were permitted in the residential area back in the sixties. The town's changed since then. Town has evolved. The, the zoning board of appeals and their analysis of what's going on on this property has evolved. And this has already been extended out for sixty years beyond uh, the original approvals. Now it is not in compliance. It hasn't been in compliance for a while. And the idea of um further grandfathering things out beyond into a new ownership range that might wanna sell to another hardware store use of very similar use in uh, let's say five, ten, twenty years would extend it out possibly further. And that is really not in compliance with the idea of evolving the use of this property that's out of compliance towards its eventual compliant use within the residential area. So I'm thinking that 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 the change of that condition probably goes too far in terms of pulling back from the stated position, the, the trying to make sure that this owner, future owners that need to be put on notice that really the change needs to be brought about can move towards compliance. Now, all that being said, I do wanna say that the current owner's changes that he made are significant and that really needs to be applauded. I know he tried to work with the concerns of the neighbors and I think that needs to be applauded. It's better than it was. All of that needs to be uh, um, commended. Uh, that being said, the future owner will not be the current. It'll be somebody else. And I assume that Mr. Wheatley and the possibility of, of his ownership will also try and strive to work with the residents and the abutters around. However, that's of course not guaranteed. Mr. Wheatley may sell to somebody else. I just, I'm just thinking that the uh, indication that this is going to evolve is important and important to continue, continue in the condition. So I guess I would not support that. The rewrite of that condition that I saw was offered by Mr. Troyer, condition of him. Um, and maybe another potential compromise would be to say, no, none of these trucks on the weekends, which is when the residential use is gonna be most intense in that area of the local folks wanting to use their properties like uh, full-time, all day. And maybe that would be a good compromise to not allow them to use them. Anyhow, those are my two cents. Thank you, uh, Mr. Keith.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Are there other members of the public who wish to address this application? I see no further hands. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period for this um for the hearing this evening. Um, so for the board, what we have um in regards to this, so this is, because this is an existing non-conforming use, um, there are some vested rights that come with that. Uh, one is that uh, the the owner is allowed to change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. Um, so long as the board can make a finding that the change in use is not substantially more detrimental uh, to the neighborhood than the current use that is allowed on the site. So um that, that's the request that's being made to the board. So I know one um that, the, that question had been asked um, by the public. So that's the, that's the authority for the board to um to make a decision in this case. Um, so we do, the board has a lot of uh uh, testimony that it has received this evening. Um, we have we had put forward a set of conditions. Um, and we have received a fair amount of um responses back from the applicant and from uh, members of the public in regards to those can, possible conditions. Should the board vote to um, to approve and to find that um, this is not, this change is not substantially more detrimental. Um, it, just a question for Mr. Troyer. Um, so the intent that we had set out last time was that we would close the hearing tonight. Uh, and then we would, uh, the board would prepare a decision and it would debate the decision and vote on it at at the following hearing.
Right.
Um, I think on May thirteenth and then the, because that currently the period closes on the fifteenth.
Right. And that's something I can address as well, uh, if we need to change it. But I think just to be clear for everybody, I got the conditions in which you wrote, uh, and uh wanted to basically respond to them the way we did. And I think we've, I think what needs to be realized is when we are putting to writing exactly what can or can't be done, we wanted to basically outline what we thought was reasonable. I've heard conditions tonight of certain areas uh, that may not be reasonable. I'm still not one hundred percent sure where the board's position is on the size of the vehicles, the amount of trips and things like that, but there's there's, this was a discussion to hear and I, I, I I, I was bummed to hear that the abutters felt like it was a slap in the face that, that we were doing. I think what they have to realize is that we were asked to basically identify uh, what could potentially be there. And uh, when you think about a commercial use, um, what hasn't been done in the past? And that's basically what I was trying to accomplish. And I was also trying to accomplish within reason uh, to meet with the abutters' issues, the board's issues, um, and, and come to agreeable conditions. I don't think we're that far apart. But I do think that there needs to be some further uh, discussions on uh, kind of fine tuning some of these conditions and some, and some of my um some of my comments to it, because I believe that the use, um it's a pre-existing non-conformal use that we're looking to expand. Not expand, basically change from the cleaning companies and the property management companies to a hardware store is gonna be utilizing it for excess storage. And I think it's a perfect use for this. And I don't think it's going to end up being the intensity that everyone is thinking. And my intention of this was not to balloon this into something else. It's exactly what I have proposed before, but when you put it in writing and it's gonna be a legal instrument that takes away the prior pre-existing use, um, uh, permits that this property owner currently has, you need to make sure that you're specific about it. And it was for discussion purposes. I think I've heard that uh, we need to potentially narrow down some of this, uh, and I would like an opportunity to do that, uh, so that we can move forward with a uh, a deal with uh, some of the board's comments that I got tonight, as well as some of the others' comments. And I would like to have an opportunity to basically rectify that between now and the next hearing.
Okay. So a question for the board, um, so do we, does the board feel that it has adequate testimony from the applicant and the uh, the public in order to close the hearing or do members of the board feel that a continuance is warranted so that the board has uh, time to mull over and as does the applicant, as does the, the public, um, and then have another hearing where we could um again, accept testimony from the applicant and the public. If the board was to close the hearing tonight, the board would be unable to accept testimony from anybody. And the board would only be able to deliberate among itself. So um would ask members of the board what their sense is on that. Mr. Hanlon?
I don't think that we have a choice. I think that we have to continue the hearing. Among other things, all the things that Mr. Troyer just says he wants to do, he won't be able to tell us if we close the hearing. Cause we can't hear from him either.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So if we close the hearing, basically, we are now going on what we've already heard and only what we've already heard. And we can't accept new information from Mr. Troyer, from Mr. Semiter, from Mr. Moore, from anybody. And I don't think that we're in a position to do that. I have lots of questions that are left, some of which will require uh, a bit more in the way of evidence and um, and I think that, that we just have to keep it, to keep it open. I think it should be clear though, that we've, we've now gotten the issues down
Yeah.
to a relatively small number. They may not be easy, but they, but, but they are relatively small. And eventually this board is the one that's gonna have to make a decision. If there's gonna be a grant of a special permit, it's not going to be because Mr. Troyer consented to it or because Mr. Semiter consented to it because we exercised our judgment under the statute and we did the best we could to uh, achieve the, the purposes of the law. And so what we need to do is to inform ourselves as to uh, as to what that is. And when the time comes up, I have a list of several issues that I just need more information on, uh, or that we need to think more about and work through the details of. And uh, I'm sure that there are possible more issues than that. But uh, but I think that, that we should try to specify what issues are, try to keep the discussion from going beyond those issues, which tonight we did, I mean, not we, the people who spoke to us did a great job doing. And um, and we should be expecting that we will both close the hearing um, and probably approve an opinion next time. But at the very least, close the hearing and if to do, and if we don't approve an opinion, we're going to need Mr. Troyer's uh, help to enable us to do that.
Um, Ms. Ralston, we have, our next hearing is scheduled for the thirteenth. My recollection is we already have four items on for that night. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have thirty-nine Woodside. Um, there's three new ones and I thought we did one oh three Thor-
Yeah.
Thorne Dyke two.
Let three Thorne Dyke is on that one as well. Okay. So it's four plus one oh three Thorne Dyke? Five total.
Yeah, three new ones and then um
Two continuances.
Woodside and
Okay. Um, and then May twenty-seventh, what is that shaping up like?
Right now, we just have one for May twenty-seven. And it will be a special permit.
Okay. Um, so Mr. Troyer, I'm assuming you would not be in favor of continuing to the twenty-seventh. You'd rather?
I'd rather, I'd rather go on the thirteenth, uh, because I think we, tonight was a tremendous conversation about, I think we have a really good idea of what conditions are remaining and, and there's, there's only a few uh, that we need to nail down between now and then. I don't think we're looking at a very long hearing next time, uh, particularly if uh, I'm able to uh, follow up with uh, with the uh, with the abutters, uh, with my concerns, uh, with the uh, with the butters, uh, with my concerns, uh, at least keep them informed what it is and have a conversation with them uh, as possible. Um, and uh, for the board uh, revise less. So I'd like to keep it on third. The other reason is we are in a P and S agreement and we're trying not to have to amend that again if possible.
No, understood. Um, so it, so the board would need to take two votes tonight, I believe. One would be to extend the review period again. Um, because presently it re, it lapses on the fifteenth of May, so I would propose to extend that to the thirtieth of May. Um, and then the board would vote to continue this hearing um, until Tuesday, May thirteenth. Does that schedule work with you, Mr. Troyer?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And then I'll send a follow-up confirmation letter like I did last time on the extension.
Okay. Um, are there any further questions or comments from the board at this time? Anything that we want to ask of the applicant to prepare uh, ahead of the next hearing? Mr. Hanlon first and then Mr. Dupont.
Okay, let me cover some of the same thing that Mr. Dupont would, but I, I see a number, four big issues here. Um, one of the biggest is one that's kind of gone below the radar because it's been literally something that has always been the background. Um, but we've repeatedly been told that this is supplemental storage. And then the conclusion has been drawn that we wouldn't see too much traffic here because certainly not every day and and so on, because it's all supplemental and there's all other things too. We have nothing in our proposed conditions that would require anything about not just the intensity of use on a particular day, but what the intensity you of use is over a longer period of time, say a year or something like that. Something that makes this in practice actually conform to what is expected to be uh, to what's expected to happen. Uh, and that Mr. Troyer has described. And I would like it if we could be, if if Mr. Troyer and we could begin thinking about how it is we might be able to firm that up. And even if it's with vague language, uh, having to do with not regular use or something like that, but I would be unsatisfied if we had nothing in the conditions to draw on. Uh, to deal with the situation where there's an evolution over time and what starts off as an intermittent use uh, becomes somewhat more intermittent use and then a more frequent use. And then suddenly you see people there every day and you look and say, well, we have so many cars, so many trips a day that we can, that that we can make. So that's an issue that I think requires a little bit of thinking over time to figure out at least, at least, I don't know that we can actually solve that problem, but at least we could give the board an opportunity uh, to uh, to resolve it or to discuss it uh, later on if if things change. Second, I think that we all agree that the size of a truck is an issue. Uh, and I was very pleased to see, not pleased to see, but it was very helpful to see how big a twenty-six thousand truck uh, uh, pound truck could be. Um, we started off in that discussion on the assumption as well as either got to be fourteen or twenty-six. And the reason is because we were trying to link it to some other bylaw or some other law. And I, I think it was ingenious to, for Mr. Troyer to use how, wow, what you needed a commercial driver's license for. But I agree with what Mr. DePonte said, that that's, that's somewhat arbitrary connection here. It's just a way of finding uh, uh, finding some other number that you've got some reference to in some other law. The truth is, is we could make up a number that Mr. Troyer could agree that between fourteen and twenty-six, let's take the, let's take half between. And we could do that as a condition. Um, there's no reason why it, it's convenient to be able to look at some other body of law. But it isn't necessary to do that. We could look at, say, how big is an actual Federal Express truck? Uh, the normal kind that we envision and and so on. So I think that we need to have an, an open mind about that. I think with respect to trips, the idea of having a lower number with a certain number of exceedances allowed is a formula that uh, could, could, could be get, to work the daily use down to something that is more acceptable to everybody. And I encourage folks to look at it. And I think that we should be looking at it too. I would not think since if it's been represented to us that on the envisioned use, we would hardly ever see anything as much as ten. I wouldn't expect to see a number of exceedances to include more than very few. So uh, but that might provide a way of at least bringing the number um, um, back down uh, to six. Someone has just stopped there. I, I think that uh, that uh, it gives us something to work with, but we're already nearly there on much of that. Oh, I guess hours of operation. That's another thing where I think we need to look at it. Uh, to be sure, it's useful to start with where the town's bylaw is. I don't for a minute think that it's necessarily true that the kind of use, I mean, we, we wake up every summer and listen to all those lawnmowers. And to be sure, they're not lawnmowers run by contractors anymore, but there are plenty of people who are exercising their residential rights to be residential people and getting me up at godly, godly time like ten o'clock in the morning. And I think that it's uh, that that it may be that some fiddling with the, the hours of operation uh, that may make them work better with the interests of both sides uh, would be helpful. Uh, we don't have to however, but I do think that that it was a good idea and we should have started with where the zoning bylaw, with not the zoning, just the town bylaw is. Uh, but this is a matter of trying to figure, to take a particular parcel and make it work in a particular way with, with certain neighborhood concerns. And I think that, that we should again, not necessarily assume that we have to find this in some bylaw or equivalent of CFR or something to come up with a reasonable uh, compromise that, that, that would make a good set of operations going forward. And it may very well be that basically um, the hours of operation on the weekday should be a little different and we should be, and we should be minimizing them on Sundays or Saturdays. Um, the, the, there needs to be a discussion about that. And I would like to hear what, what the discussion is uh, is on that. Uh, we, we will, we've started off with where we are, but I'm not sure that we will necessarily say, stay there. Uh, depending on, on uh, on, you know, thinking this through a little bit more. So these are the issues that we talked about. And these, these are some factual questions that need to be resolved. Or at least questions of further thinking that need to be resolved. And we need to be thinking about it at the same time as the applicant and the butters. Uh, in order to be able to move forward next time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Mr. Dupont?
So it's the uh, truck size as well. And unless I misheard, I thought it was stated that the trucks that were going to be used would be the ones that were owned by um, by uh, the Shattuck Hardware. And so I'd like to know what it is for clarification that they actually own, because the sizes of those are what are being offered as what we would expect to see on Pond Lane. So if those are twenty-six foot box trucks, I'd like to know that. But if they're not, and they're smaller than that, I'd like to know that as well.
Great, thank you. Anything else on the board? Being none. So what the board has before us, we have two votes that we need to take. We need to take them in a particular order. Uh, the first is um, that we need to extend the review period uh, for this hearing. Uh, so I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington extend the public hearing review period for docket three eight two two twenty Pond Lane to uh, I believe is Friday, May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And let me just look at the calendar really quick to make sure I've got that correct. That is correct, yeah. So Friday, May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And Mr. Troyer, that was the correct date we decided, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. Um, so that's the, the motion before the floor. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hanlon. So roll call vote of the board to, this is to extend the public review period for docket three eight two two twenty Pond Lane until Friday, May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, so roll call vote of the board. Um, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that the review period is extended. And then um, we'll move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington continue the public hearing for docket three eight two two twenty Pond Lane to Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty PM.
Second.
Thank Mr. Hanlon. So roll call vote of the board to continue, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we are continued on twenty Pond Lane. Uh, thank you everyone for your participation and assistance with that. And um, we will, Mr. Troyer, I will probably, I'm sure we'll exchange an email or two in the coming weeks before we, in preparation for that hearing.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Um, so that brings us to the next item on our agenda.
Mr. Chair, this is from Cat.
Yeah.
I had made a request for um, hop off after the twenty pond. Um, I'm out traveling.
Yeah.
And um, I'm in a hotel room here in the west coast, so I just wanted to make a request there.
Yeah. Um, nope, that's fine. We have, we have five voting members remaining, so um, that would be fine.
Thank you so much.
Good. You appreciate me calling in from the west coast.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, so next is docket three eight uh, four zero twenty-nine Hemlock Street. Um, my apologies to all of all of you who are in the upcoming uh, hearings that, uh, that went a bit longer than I had anticipated. Um, but with that, if I could ask the applicant to introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Good evening. I'm Kate Bender at twenty-nine Hemlock Street. And we are requesting a modest expansion at the front of my home that answers the question, how can I safely continue to live in my home as I age? I am retired and am actively involved in our community and wish to stay in my home for as long as I possibly can. With that, I've been working with my architect, Shira Lyon, who was with me um, to come up with the solution that is reasonable and that addresses safety concerns for myself as a senior citizen. With that quick broad overview of what we are proposing is this modest two hundred and forty-one square foot addition at the front. What it entails is adding an interior vacuum elevator that goes from my basement to the first floor to the second floor. A bump out of the first and second floors to accommodate possibly a walker or a wheelchair as needed and um, allows exterior to revamp the front entranceway to make it more user friendly. And to add a basement door so that those like myself who cannot manage um, steps can come into the basement and take the elevator up to the main floors. So that's sort of my broad overview of what it's about. I'm going to turn it over to Shira for all the technical details.
Thank you for that. Um, Ms. Ralston, if you could give Ms. Lyon uh, permission to share. Ms. Lyon, I hopefully you're able to share your screen at this point.
I, I. If you could turn this thing down. If you put yours on, it's on mute. Sorry, I'll just be a minute. We're having trouble with two computers doing the same thing.
Don't worry. Are you able to share your screen?
I believe so.
If not, I can bring up the documents that were submitted. Oh, there we go. Perfect.
I think I've got it. Okay. Can everyone see that first page?
Yes.
Is that first page visible?
It is, it is. I can see both the first and second pages.
Okay. Um, let me see if I can enlarge it. Okay. Um, so on this left side is the front elevation of the house. It's a Garrison Colonial. And you can see currently the stairs up to that front door are quite steep. It's a um, it's about fifteen um, risers to get up to the, to the front. So um, not that accessible. Um, the plan to add a door at the, next to the garage, so to the left of the garage, um, will allow um, Ms. Bender to pull into her driveway and then have immediate on-grade access to um, the basement and her elevator um, as she described. Um, so I guess in this case, we're asking for relief from um, um, adding to a non-conforming single-family home. Um, and also uh, putting that addition in the front setback, which is also non-conforming. Um, so this site plan shows where the addition will be located. Um, the street being up at the top of the page. Um, and the red shows the addition, it's five foot deep. So enough to allow um, an entryway, but not um, not oversized, just enough for a um, an accessible door, so a three, thirty-six inch door and a little space beyond that to move into the living space. Um, we are working with a landscape architect as well to help us create um, steps that are both a little wider and uh, lower um, riser height so that they are more easily um, navigated up to this new entrance. There's no build out at the grade, at the, at the ground level. Um, just a series of columns beneath the first floor addition. And so these are the current elevations. Front elevation is really the critical piece here. Um, and this is the basement level. Um, with the um, vacuum elevator wide enough for a wheelchair or a walker. And a simple um, door off to this side of the garage. And on the first floor, we're basically adding this um, modest entryway um, with a three-foot door and then a wider opening here to be able to easily move into the living space. And the elevator sits in part of that um, of that entry sequence. On the second floor, um, um, Ms. Bender is an avid artist and this is her art room. So we are adding a little bit of extra space for her to bring um, some extra uses that she now um, she now does in the basement, some of the um, art processes that she'd like to move up to this level and have it all easily on one, one level. Um, and in this case, the elevator um, is right off of the uh, the upstairs hallway. So it's a, a three-stop lift. Um, and then in terms of the um, elevations, so on this side of elevation in the art room, we're just adding three small awning windows for a little bit of uh, light and ventilation. The front elevation, um, we actually tried to make the Garrison Colonial a little more nuanced, a little smaller scale by adding um, this bay and also changing the um, the type of siding to a vertical board and batten alongside the clappards um, to give a little more interest and a little more um, nuance to that elevation. Um, the stairs will still be um, wood frame, wood stairs and handrail with um, some new walls and stone stairs below. Um, and then we'll improve the sight lighting as well to make the uh, that whole entry piece into the home um, safer.
Driveway stays the same size.
Right. The driveway stays the same size and basically is used for one. Right, the driveway stays the same size and basically is used for one car, although it's wide enough for a second vehicle. And that is basically the architectural plans at this point. That just shows the uh, the little gable addition to the um. To the art room. Um. And I will, I will leave it at that. Um.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Um, just in general for the record, um, so this is an undersized lot. Um, so that's an existing non-conformity. Um, it also, the frontage um is less than, is required for the district, so that's the second non-conformity. Um. And the uh lot coverage percentage is fine. Um. The front yard, the proposed front yard depth um is existing non-conforming. Um, as is the right side depth um. And the left side depth is fine, the rear is fine. Um. There were a couple of dimensional questions. Um, one had to do with usable open space. Um. I believe this property has no usable open space because the rear yard is sloped greater than eight percent. Um. Are you able, excuse me, are you able to confirm that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
The, yeah, the only usable open space is just directly behind the house in this area and it is. Less than six hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Yeah. Um, and then the other question I had had was, do you know what the average grade? Is at the house? And the, the reason I ask is that in the basement level. If the height, if the difference in grade between the average grade and the underside of the ceiling. Um, of the, at the basement level is four foot six or greater, then it counts as a story. And I just want to be able to confirm that that is not the case here and that that is. The lowest level is not a story.
Um, that is correct. The lowest level, the average grade. Actually took the average grade on each of the four elevations. Um, at the back, it's extremely low. It's a matter of inches.
Yeah.
Um, the front actually is about fifty-one and a half inches because it has that. Full exposure at the garage. And the side elevations are sixteen and a quarter inches and twenty-five inches.
Okay. So that's the difference between the average grade and the underside of the ceiling?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. So on average, that it's not, so on average, it is not, and well, in every side, it doesn't matter, so. Great, uh, those are the things I had wanted to confirm. Um. So the, this variety of different um. Requests, so basically five, three, nine. Um. C and D uh in relation to the um. The front yard, the building upon um and expanding and exist the. Um. The existing uh porches, decks and steps that are in the front yard. Um. I do note that the proposed uh addition at the art room, the bay window is. Is that something that one can step into or is it just at window height?
Um, it's, it is um full height, floor to ceiling.
Um. So it's a second-story addition within the required front yard setback. Um, so under the bylaw, cannot extend more than one foot beyond the existing building wall. Um, and in this case, it would be extending by one foot ten. Um. And that section of the bylaw doesn't give us a special permit option for approval, so um. I would ask Mr. Stuponder, Hanlon, if they agree. I think that would require a variance. Now, there is a variance application filed, so. Um. But would you agree that that would require a variance?
It would seem to me you're correct.
Okay. Okay. All right, uh, so other than that, um, are there questions from the board? Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
So it was just, uh. Okay, we, we don't have a, a need for a large addition here. I mean, it isn't a large addition, so it doesn't. Require a special permit for that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, and where do we stand on eight point one point three? B, uh, it seems to me at the very least that. That uh the stuff that's covered by five, three, nine, C and D can be done with special permit and. Uh, that there's no need for considering anything further under eight point one point three B, but I wondered if you agree with that.
So eight, uh, five, three, nine, and C is the um. The second-story addition cannot extend greater than twelve inches, so that one.
I thought that variance, right?
That would need to be a variance, but five, three, nine, D would allow. Um, to build upon the existing steps and to um extend by a special permit.
Right. Yeah, that's all I was, I just wanted to make sure that we knew which are the provisions that are in play and which ones are not.
Absolutely, um. Just wanted to confirm. Are these existing gross floor area? Right here. Yeah, the extension, the gross floor area is not proposed to be extended by seven hundred and fifty, so that's fine. Other questions from the board? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open this. Hearing for public comment. Public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Uh, those members of public who wish to address this hearing can uh use the raise hand button in the react tab at the bottom of the screen. Um. And you'll be called upon by the chair, asked for your name and address, and given time for your questions and comments. Um, so Ms. Lyon, if I could ask you to go ahead and uh stop your share.
Yes.
Um, and then uh we have hand raised, uh Beth and David Martin.
Hi, Beth and David Martin, uh, we are neighbors, um, abutters. Um, we have no issues with the proposed um. Expansion of the property. Um. I'm sorry, I'm getting information from our lawyer who got kicked out. Um.
But we have a, we have a standing variance request for the property line to clarify the property line between our two properties. And we didn't know how this existing um special permit would affect. The, the longstanding variance request we have that's before the board. I think it's.
I don't think it's, yeah, I think it's being submitted this week.
Okay.
Um.
So I had.
But I, I am aware that the. Current proposal does include the updated square footage of the lot. That um includes our variance. So I, I, I believe that the square footage indicated in the current proposal by Kate. Is an updated um square footage. It reflects, it reflects the, the proposed change.
Yeah.
That, that's in, that's in agreement between the two parties.
Okay, so my understa, my understanding of the, of the case, and I, I see Attorney Leonie is back. Um, is that the, essentially the property line between uh this, which is twenty-nine. And your property, which is, I believe, thirty-nine.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, thank you. Um, there's a permit, there's an application that's being filed with the board that would shift the. Property line between those two properties. They're both non-conforming properties. Um, and so it would require a variance because it's a non-standard.
Exactly, exactly.
Property, the, for the, as far as the board's concerned, it's happening on the side of the house that has an existing um. That, that is compliant currently with the side yard setback and will remain compliant with the side yard setback.
Exactly.
So it should not have any um impact.
Agreed.
Um, well, at the, and effectively, because it hasn't been filed yet, the board would make its decision independent of that.
Sure, 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 sure. Absolutely.
It should not.
Um, we're just, we're just, we're happy to have Kate do whatever she would like to her house.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um. Are there any other members of public who wish to speak to this application? Seeing none, uh, oh. Ah, Leonie, you're back again.
I am, um.
Sorry, you've been having troubles.
My internet just died and I didn't hear anything that my clients just said. So I'm kind of uh at a um, a little out of the loop for that interaction.
I, I'm happy to summarize for you.
Okay.
Um, so effectively, they said there is a, there is a pending uh, or there is a variance application to be filed. Which would change the position of the lot line between this property, which is twenty-nine, and the abutting property, which is thirty-three. Um, as you had indicated earlier today, um, that change will not create any new non-conformities. Um, but because it is, uh, you are changing the size of non-conforming lots. Um, it cannot be done by right and it can't be done by a special permit. It does require a variance process as you had, had um indicated. Uh, as far as this hearing goes, it doesn't really impact us, one, because it hasn't been filed yet. Um, but also um, thinking forward, the only. Real things that this would change, it would change this, the square footage of the lot. Um, and the things that are really tied to lot is usable open space, which this already is non-conforming with usable open space. Because the lot is too sloped to qualify. Um, it wouldn't come anywhere near to creating it, to eliminating enough landscaped area to fall under ten percent. Um, and the other one is, is overall lot coverage. Um, and that's the only one that we would need to pay attention to. Um, looking forward.
Right, and, and I do want to note, and I think um. Uh. Um, it was noted with the application that the lot size that they did. Um, put in the special permit is the size of the lot. As it would be if um the land transfer between the two properties took place. The three thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight feet, so I think that, I believe the calculations were based on the proposed lot size. Not the current lot size and um. Uh, if, if Cheryl Lyon can confirm that, I'm not sure if all the math was done that way, but um. I do see on the special permit. Application, it says existing lot size three thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet. That will be the lot size with the transfer of the land, so.
Okay, so the, the uh plot plan. That was uh done by uh Rover Survey is listing the front lot, the front of this. At the street as being fifty feet. And the lot area is being three thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight. Um, and the side yard setback is sixteen foot three, sixteen, excuse me, sixteen point three feet. So would be the proposed condition or is that the current condition?
So. I don't, I think that um the frontage and such is the same. So it's just the overall lot size I'm talk, I'm talking about because I, I can't speak to their, the um measurements for the. Uh, frontage and all that, um. Those measurements, only the overall square footage of the actual lot. Um, I, yeah, I see, I think the town has it is four thousand and seventy-five square feet or something like that, but. With the little strip, so, so as far as um the math, as far as percentages, it's. It should be the, the, the three hundred and seventy.
Okay.
Three thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot is the um. Proposed lot size for the variance that hasn't been filed yet. So.
Mr. Chair, if I can just um respond to that. There must, there, I think there must be some error in calculation somewhere along the way, but. Uh, from our perspective, we, we um hired Rover Survey to do. An existing plot plan and then a proposed simply showing the addition. Uh, without asking him to reduce the, the lot size by the. Um, you know, what will be um discussed in the variance with um.
Okay.
Ms. Leonie, so it, that should be the, the current existing condition.
Okay.
But yes, my, my, I think my clients noted they're not opposed to the addition. They don't have any objection and.
Hmm.
It's a um, you know, we're all interested in people being able to stay in their homes. Here in Arlington, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and just um, so I had received correspondence early from um. From Attorney, Attorney Leonie about the, and had noted that the. Uh, side yard setback would be reduced from sixteen point three to thirteen point seven. So here where it is on this plan sixteen point three. This is the current condition of the site as it is today, so it does not include the proposed changes that will be, that are being filed. Um, to change that, so. What the board has in front of it, this is the current condition. These are the conditions we're going with for, as far as this permit is concerned.
Okay.
Right. All right, thank you all for that.
Sorry about my technical glitch, so I guess.
Oh, no worries.
All right.
Are there any other members of public who wish to address this hearing? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment for this hearing. Um, so what the board has before it. Um. This is an application uh for a special permit. There's also an application for a variance. Um, the special permit um. Would be under section uh five, three, nine, C, excuse me, five, three, nine, D. Um, five, three, nine, D. Allows that porches, decks, steps and landings in the required setback. Are not considered within the foundation wall and may not be enclosed, extended or built upon, except by special permit. Uh, which this is what the board would be acting on today. Um, also, and then the variance uh is under section five, three, nine, C. Which states the second-story additions within the required front yard setback may not extend more than one foot beyond the existing building wall. Um, this is because at the second floor story level, uh, the applicant is proposing um. An addition uh that would step out at the second floor level that would be one foot ten inches as opposed to the, the one foot max. Um. So uh my first question for the applicants um is. Are you negotiable on the, the twenty-inch setback at the second floor level? Um. To avoid. Uh, needing to uh consider it as a variance.
It actually makes a difference for equipment that I want in my art studio.
Okay. Um. So variance has different requirements than a special permit. Um, variance requirements are under state law. Um, and the. Uh, we can, we can run through the, the test on those. The first is that there is something. Um. Unusual about the soil shape or topography of the site that is leading to a hardship. Um. And then that the, the required, the requested relief is directly related to that noted hardship. Um. And. In this case, I'm not sure. In this case, I'm not sure if. I would ask you what your, what the rationale would be for what it is about the soil shape or topography of the site. That's unusual in relation to the district that is leading to the need for the addition at the second floor to be in excess of twelve inches.
We don't have the answer for that. Yeah, so. If it's easier to let go of the ten inches, I will figure out a way around it. Let's keep it simple. I'd rather be able to move ahead.
Thank you for that. So then it, that the part becomes compliant, so we don't have, no longer have to worry about five three nine C. Uh, which would just bring us back to um, so five three nine D. So are there. Questions or comments from the board in relation to what is being proposed? So as was shown in the plans at the first, at the first floor level, at the, excuse me, at the basement floor level, uh, which is not a story. Um, the addition would be supported on posts. Um, there would be, the garage doors are there, there's a proposed entrance door adjacent to that on the first floor level. The floor, the, that floor is extended five feet closer to the street over where the existing um, landing is. And extending the width of the house. Um, that would be used for a new entrance and mudroom, um, and also for an extension of the living room. And then on the upper floor, uh, that would also be um. An extension of living space, uh, partly for an art space that would then have a subsequent. Additional bump out at the second floor level of a foot. I know in the past, the board has sometimes discussed um. In the front yard additions, uh, sort of the, the characteristics of the addition. Excuse me, if they are just in a, if you know, if they appear to be. Uh, sort of a, a mudroom extension, that kind of space, or if it does appear to be a full extension of the house and how the board feels about. Those kinds of changes. Um, so I'm curious if there was any. Questions or comments in regards to this particular application. From the board. Seeing none. So section five three nine D does not have any particular, any required findings of its own. Um, it relies strictly on the findings that are required under section uh five three, excuse me, under section three three three. Um, so uh, just reviewing what those required findings are. Uh, so the first is that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. What is being proposed is to uh decrease the amount of front yard setback on the property. Uh, thereby allowing, um, as the applicant has stated at the start, um, ability to uh. Make modifications to the home with the intent of improving um. The resident's long-term ability to remain in the residence, um, and also to improve the safety of the, the front steps. Um, to the property, both of those are um, in keeping with good long-term goals of the town to um, improve its housing stock. And especially to make stop, housing stock that is uh, better able to allow uh, the current residents to um. To age in place and to um. Create housing that is usable to a larger proportion of the population. Um, the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district. Normally addition in the front would not be allowed, but this is allowed under section five three nine D because of the um, existing uh, existing uh, deck. Uh, stair landing that is at the front of the home. The requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare, uh, as stated before. Is desirable to uh. Make modifications to housing in a, in a, in an orderly fashion and especially in a way that allows for the continued use of the property by a wider uh range of people. Requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Um, at the level where the vehicle is being stored, the front wall of the house is not changing. Um, and the addition of the posts will not create any impediments to uh viewing the sidewalk or the street, so it should not. Impact pedestrian safety and should not lead to any additional traffic congestion. Uh, requested use will not overload any public systems. Um, it will have marginal changes to the, the energy use of the home. But beyond that, will not um, affect any other public systems. Uh, the, there are no special regulations for the requested use. Uh, the requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. As opposed to be, appears to be a well thought. Addition that is in keeping with the, the character of the existing home, um, is an orderly expansion of, of the home and. Um, is in keeping with the, the general. Front yard setbacks uh that are in the, in that district, in that area of town. And uh, requested use will not cause an excess of, uh, an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, this is an extension of existing single family home and a single family district will not uh, cause any detrimental excess. Because this is what the district was intended to do. Um, are there any uh questions or comments from the board in regards to those proposed findings?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Hanlon.
Um, I was just, the reason I didn't answer when you called before for comment on the extension. Of living space into the front yard is because I was thinking about it, because this poses a harder case for me and I've probably. Spoken on the opposite side of this a number of times. Um, it seems to me that this does raise the kind of issue that we've seen in other cases. Um, it here doesn't at all seem to be the kind of. Uh, you know, pretext that sometimes happens where what's really going on is. Uh, it's simply an ex, an ability to um, to extend the living space into the, into the uh, into the front yard. Um, here, I think the reasoning for it and the, and the balance of public and, public convenience and necessity. Um, seems to me to sort of outweigh the, the impairment in this case uh, on the interest of maintaining the uh. The integrity of the setback.
I'm done talking, but I'm hearing what they're saying.
Sorry?
Nope, sorry, they, somebody wasn't muted, they're muted now.
Um, it seemed to me that, that I, this is a special permit. We always are doing things on balance and these kinds of things. And that here the balances seem to be inclined in such a way that, that. Uh, the impact on the integrity of the front yard setback is not. Uh, does not outweigh the beneficial impacts and that's why uh, I'm happy to go along with. Uh, with the, these sets of findings, which seem to me to be correct.
Thank you, Mister Hanlon. So were the board to be um. Inclined to approve this application, there are three standard conditions that the board would impose. Uh, the first is that the plans and specifications approved by the board for the special permit shall be the final plans. Specifications submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. Should be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the zoning Arlington zoning board of appeals. Second is that the building inspector is hereby notified that they are to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures. At any time they determine that violations are present. The building inspector shall proceed under section three point one of the zoning bylaw and under the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty one D of the Massachusetts general laws. And institute noncriminal complaints. If necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with section three point one. And number three, that the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to this special permit grant. I would also propose an additional con- condition that um. The second story addition. Shall comply. With. Section five point three point nine point C and not exceed. Twelve inches in depth. Are there any other conditions that members of board feel would be appropriate for this application? Seeing none. Uh, Mister Hanlon, would you be willing to uh coordinate the preparation of a decision in favor of approval?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Great. Okay, so we have reviewed all of the findings. Uh, we have public testimony and we have reviewed the. Three standard conditions plus the one additional condition. Um, I believe the board is in a position to um. Uh, to close um, the acceptance of testimony and go ahead and close this hearing. Uh, the board's procedure then would be uh, at the subsequent meeting, the board would vote, make a final vote on a written decision. Which will be a formal decision in the case. So with that, um, I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington move to close. The public hearing for docket three eight four zero uh twenty nine Hemlock Street.
Second.
Thank you, Mister Hanlon. So uh, roll call vote of the board to close the hearing. Uh, so we have Mister Dupont. Sir, Mister Dupont, has said a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mister Hanlon?
Yes.
Mister LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mister Bernowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, we are closed on twenty nine Hemlock Street. Thank you very much for coming before us this evening. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you to all of you.
Very welcome.
Good night.
So with that next on our agenda, docket three eight four three seventeen Brattle Place. If I could ask the applicant to introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, um, my name is Jen White. I'm here tonight to request a special use permit for seventeen Brattle Place. A special use permit would allow me to continue to run the small doggy daycare business. I operate and have been operating for over four years. It's called the Whispering Wolf. Um, so some background information, I've lived in Arlington just shy of twenty years. My family owns and occupies both fifteen and seventeen Brattle Place, I'm the mother of three boys and I have two dogs of my own. The Whispering Wolf started as a dog walking business in two thousand eighteen when my youngest started preschool. It helped me supplement my family's income while still being available for my kids. Um, in twenty twenty during the pandemic, I expanded my dog walking services to include pack play. Basically, pack play entailed, entails me picking up a set of dogs, bringing them to my yard for a few hours and then bringing them home. Um, the hours of operation are from eleven to two P M, Monday through Friday. If Arlington schools are closed, I'm closed. If the weather is bad, I'm closed. If my kids are sick, I'm closed. So I'm basically a glorified dog walker. It worked really well for my clients because it kind of gave them extended time away from those pandemic puppies. And it was at a very reasonable rate so they could focus on work or homeschooling their kids. And it was a strong need in the community at the time during pandemic and it has proven to be um, a strong need today as well. The people still working from home. Um, it's important to note that when I expanded my services to include pack play, I worked with the then Arlington control officer Diane Welch. To ensure that everything I was doing was legal and that the Whispering Wolf was in compliance with the town's bylaws. I was assured by the ACO that based on my business plan, the mobility, the short duration, the low numbers, and the fact that I didn't have any employees. I didn't advertise at my house. I had no traffic because I did all the pickups and the drop offs, so there was no added traffic compliance. That I didn't need any special licensing or permits. So with ACO's blessing back then, I moved forward in twenty twenty one, the Whispering Wolf became a registered LLC. I became insured and bonded and even, I even registered yearly with the state to maintain my good standing status and things have been great. Fast forward to January twenty second, or January twenty second of this year, I received a letter informing me that I was in violation of the zoning bylaw. Because I was operating a doggy daycare in a residential zone. Um, as soon as I received that letter, I called inspectional service department to find out what was going on and. What's really remarkable is that they didn't even know I existed. Um, I hadn't had a complaint in four years that I've been in operation. And the only reason I got on the radar was because one of my clients was bit during off-leash hours at Buckfield. And when the owner found out that there's a mandatory quarantine imposed. They contacted the ACO and asked if they could still bring their dog to the Whispering Wolf, which is me. So basically, ACO Wilson informed the inspection services of my existence and my zoning violation. So that's why we're here today. And honestly, um, that's neither here nor there, so I want to be transparent, I want to be compliant. I love this town, I love what I do, I love dogs, so I am on board to do what is ever necessary to stay in business. But to add to my story, and sorry, it's a long one. In October of twenty twenty four, a new act was passed in Massachusetts called Ollie's Law. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with Ollie's Law. But basically, Ollie's Law is an act to increase kennel safety. It's a great law in principle. But what it does, it requires any Massachusetts dog-based business, whether it's a walker or a sitter or a groomer or a trainer. Having any number of dogs on their property for any consistent time without the owner present to have the commercial kennel license. So I don't know how many of you are dog owners or if you're on A Dog on Facebook, but what you'll see is. Lots of people bring dogs to their homes and now with Ollie's Law, you're not allowed to do that unless you have a commercial kennel license. Um, and you need your animal control officer in your district to. Approve a commercial kennel license. And all that would be fine. I would totally welcome an inspection from the ACO as I strive to maintain. The same common sense regulations and policies of a larger licensed facility. However, to get it, a commercial kennel license in Arlington, I need to be located in industrial or a business zone. Dun dun dun. And that's why I'm here in front of you today to request a special use permit. Which would then allow ACO Wilson to come and inspect my property. And issue a commercial kennel license if she sees it's fit to do so. Um, I understand the point of zoning and the need to maintain regulations to protect the quality of our neighborhoods. I am however, in a unique situation where I own two side-by-side properties with a double lot. And my yard is boarded on three sides by the apartment complex's large parking lot. And one of my remaining sides is by a very supportive neighbor. Um, my home and my place of business is the last house on a dead-end street that abuts the bike path. And ironically Dudley Street, AKA the industrial zone. So I'm literally fifteen feet from being in the industrial zone. Um, so on a daily basis, I experience all the impact of being in such close, uh, close proximity to the industrial zone. The sounds, the smells, the paint fumes, but I don't get any of the benefits which I'm here today asking for. So I also just want to stress that, um, aside from all this, sorry, I'm getting a little nervous because I'm talking too long, but um. The Whispering Wolf has been vital to my family during these economically challenging times. Um, I think you all know Arlington is very expensive. And um. This business has allowed my family to stay here and we love it here. And additionally, as you can see through all the letters that my clients' neighbors have posted. Um, I provide reliable and affordable um, care for dogs. And I also provide an outdoor setting that, a feature that no other licensed doggy daycare in Arlington can have, can boast. Um, in all of this process, I've looked at trying to rent a place in Arlington, in a industrial or business zone and what I've found is that. The only place that I could actually get dedicated outdoor space is over five thousand dollars a month. Um, and that increased overhead would require my prices to go up, my numbers to grow and my whole business model to just go out the window, which. My clients don't want. They particularly choose to be with me because they don't want that larger feel of a larger doggy daycare. Um, in closing, I love what I do. I'm really good at it. I'd like to be in compliance and continue to operate from my current residentially zone property in Arlington. This is why I'm requesting a special use permit. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns you might have. Additionally, I'm open to any conditions that the board sees fit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. So just to, just to clarify, um, so this is a request for a home occupation, I believe is how you are. Is, is the, the avenue that, so essentially because the, 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 because the way the bylaw is written. There are very, very, very few commercial um, opportunities in the residential districts. One of the very few is, is the definition for home occupation. Um, and home occupation does have um, specific conditions that need to be met. And so that's where this would be under. So there's a. I'm gonna go ahead and just share this because I have it up on my screen. Uh, so there's the supplemental regulations for permitted uses, so home occupation. So a home occupation is a special permit. Use um, in this, in the, all the residential districts. So in any residential district, a home occupation is permitted. Is, excuse me, is permitted and not permitted, but permitted if all the following conditions are met. One, that no non-resident shall be employed therein. This white is. Has said this is her business. She's the sole. Owner proprietor, so there are no additional employees.
Or my husband sometimes.
Okay. But you're resident. Not more than twenty five percent. Of the existing gross floor area of the dwelling unit in the principal building, not to exceed six hundred square feet, is devoted to the home occupation. And no stock and trade commodities or products shall occupy space beyond those limits. Plans were, there was a plan submitted to the board as a part of the application that indicates the portion of the house that is dedicated to. To use in this business. It does not exceed six hundred square feet or twenty five percent of the existing gross floor area. Number three, there should be no display of goods or wares visible from the street. Number four, all advertising devices visible from off the lot are specifically prohibited. Or five, buildings or premises occupied shall not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood due to exterior appearance, emission of odor, gas, smoke, dust, noise. Electrical disturbance or in any other way. In a structure containing more than one dwelling unit, the use shall not become objectionable or detrimental to any residential use within the structure. So I, you had said that you own both fifteen and seventeen. Are they a combined structure? Are they two separate structures?
They're combined.
They're combined, okay.
It's a duplex.
Yeah.
And there are six, any such building shall include no feature. Of design, not customary in buildings for residential use. So you don't board. Dogs overnight, you don't have any kind of facilities that are specific to the keeping or maintaining of. Of dogs for longer periods of time that would not normally be a part of a house.
No.
Okay. Is there a resident in number fifteen or is it vacant?
No, we both live in both the units, so.
Oh, you live in both units, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there was, there was a, I don't know, what did you call it? A hotel door on the first floor that combined both?
Oh, okay.
And we just took the door off the hinges so we can go freely. Like we still have two staircases. Two kitchens. One kitchen is now the office that I use for where I'm sitting right now, where we took all the appliances out, but so, yeah.
Then the only other question I had, so if we go to the definition for home occupation. So home occupation is an accessory use which is carried on entirely within a dwelling unit. And is incidental and subordinate to the dwelling use, which does not include retail sale of merchandise on the premises nor alternate. Alter the residential character of the lot or building as regulated under section five ten dot one. Home occupation shall not include personal service, establishment uses, office, business or professional uses, commercial stables or kennels. Or teaching of more than three pupils simultaneously. And in the case of music instruction, teaching of more than one pupil at a time.
And this is where the rub starts because when I originally started my business and I worked with ACO Welsh.
Yep.
It wasn't, what I do wasn't considered a kennel, but thanks to Ollie's Law, I am now defined as needing a kennel license. There's no kenneling going on.
And I'm fairly, our town bylaws do not contain a definition of kennel. It's certainly obviously not stables.
It'd be a lot bigger poop to clean up, so no.
So I know that the town. I've just been reading the materials for town meeting this year because we're. Looking at. Ollie's Law. This is the. Seeing if it has a definition of kennel as a part of the law.
I believe it does, so. Now it just says what a doggy daycare is.
Enforcement. Licensing. Section five kennels, definition, commercial breeder kennel, which this is not. Domestic charitable corporation kennel. Animal Welfare Society, this is not kennel. A pack or collection of dogs on a single premises, including a commercial boarding or training kennel. Commercial breeder kennel, domestic charitable corporation kennel, personal kennel or veterinary kennel. Personal kennel, a pack or collection of more than four dogs. Three months old or older, owned or kept under single ownership for private personal use. Provided however, the breeding of personally owned dogs may take place for the purpose of improving. Yada, 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 that selling. Further, that personal kennel shall not sell, trade, barter, distribute a dog that is not bred from its own. Okay. So it's. So this would not be a personal kennel. This would not be a veterinary kennel. It's not domestic charitable. It's not a commercial breeder kennel. And so kennel is a pack or collection of dogs on a single premises, including a commercial boarding or training kennel. Which training kennel is not defined. But it is sub under commercial, which is not a commercial, a commercial breeder kennel, which is not domestic charitable corporation kennel, which this is not personal kennel. Or veterinary kennel. So it's none of those. But it would be a pack or collection of dogs on a single premise.
But with multiple owners.
Correct. So I. I think what the, so. The way that I'm looking at this and members of the board should feel free to. To weigh in on this. There's a few different. Things under the definition for home occupation. The first is. Is this a kennel? Because if it is a kennel, then. Under the home occupation definition, it is, it's under the list of shall not include.
Right.
I don't believe it falls under. It's certainly not an office. But I don't think it's. I don't know if it meets any of the other criteria. If it's a public service establishment, I don't think so. We would have to. Review that definition. But really, the second question for me is when it says. Carried on entirely within a dwelling unit. It is in, so a dwelling. Unit is a separated portion of a building containing living, sleeping, housekeeping, accommodation, sanitary facilities for occupancy by one household. So.
So my business is primarily takes place in my backyard.
Correct. So it's really not within the dwelling unit. So. Furious talking to other members of the board, what they. I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and stop the share. What their senses of this. This is a difficult. Challenge because obviously this is a use where it's an ongoing use. It's a use that. From the information that's been submitted so far to the board is a low impact use. It is a use that. A member of the. You know, an employee of the town had indicated in the past was of, was an acceptable use. But. It's up to the zoning Board of Appeals to determine whether or not that's actually the case. And while the. Regulations for the operation of a home occupation appear to be met in this case, I have. Concerns that this use may not meet the the technical definition of a home occupation. I'd like to hear from other members of the board what their sense is on this.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DuPont?
So I have to confess that I've been a dog owner for most of the last twenty five years. So my sympathies are. Fairly obvious. You know, when I looked at this application. I realized that first of all kennel was not defined and I think you already alluded to this in the zoning bylaw. And you know, having actually used kennels before many times, I mean, it. Strikes me that the use that's being proposed really doesn't fit into what I would consider to be a kennel. And so despite the fact of the licensing requirements and the consideration by the licensing authority. That this may be a kennel, to me, that doesn't seem like we need to be this constrained. By that particular, you know, that, I think it's a rubric. I think it's a heading and I think it's definitional for our purposes. So as far as, you know, it being a kennel, which is not permitted for home occupation. I mean, I I looked up what I think to be a kennel and I think it was Merriam-Webster, but it talks about. You know, shelter, structure, establishment for boarding, a place to live with regular meals. And that was my experience when I boarded a dog, you know, it'd usually be for the whole day or. You know, for overnight, for a period of of days. So. Despite what the state law says, Ollie's Law says, I don't think this is a kennel. So I don't really have. Any issue with. Essentially making our own determination that it is not a kennel for purposes of home occupation. I realize that the definition of dwelling unit is perhaps a little bit more. Of a consideration. But I'm wondering how black and white that has to be in terms of. You know, how we would have to consider that it would be carried on entirely within. I mean. I suppose one, if you wanted to be flexible, could make an argument that. You know, within would include and encompass the grounds included in the, you know, with the dwelling unit, so. Those are things that I would consider in terms of whether to approve this.
Mr. Hanlon?
I agree completely with what Mr. DuPont just said.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Other comments for the board at this time? None. I'm gonna go ahead and open this this hearing for a public comment. Public comment. Is taken as it relates to the matter at hand. Should be directed to the board for the purpose of helping to inform its decision. Members of the. Public who wish to address this application can. Push on the raise hand in the react tab at the bottom of the screen. We called upon by the chair, ask for your name and address for the record. And given time for your comments. So with that, the first hand is Neil Mongold.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Neil Mongold. I live at twelve Brattle Place. We are very close, close by neighbors. To Jennifer and Dan White and. I want to speak on behalf of my wife, Wendy Richter. Also, we want to speak strongly in favor and support of this special permit. Jen and Dan have been active, vital members of our little neighborhood. Enclave here on Brattle Place, which is, as was mentioned, is a dead end street. It's a very tight neighborhood. Made, I would say tighter by the activities and the energy that Dan and Jen have bring to the, to the neighborhood. And. I would have no doubt at all that and have not, we have not had any problems with. The business that's operated so far, but I have no doubt at all that Jen and Dan will continue to run. The Whispering Wolf in a responsible and responsive manner. And so I speak on behalf. Urge urging the. Board to. Grant the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Dan Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Let me go ahead and echo what Neil said. We do. Very fortunately have a very, very tight neighborhood. And if you were to look at the businesses that's currently being done by Jen and Dan. It's quite benign. At no time. Since since Jen has had her business, has there been. Any noise. I, I. I've never heard anything. I've I've never been bothered by traffic. I've never been bothered by smell. It's quite well run. They're fantastic individuals. They are an asset to our community. And I would just. Please ask the board to go ahead and. Get this done. We'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Just for the record, I need your address.
Seven Brattle Place. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. And we have Mr. Steve Moore.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I have a question. I, this is a bit of a thorny issue, but my question is really nothing to do with the thorniness of it. It more has to do with. Process and and rules of executions of special permits. Is it possible that if you were to grant such a special permit here? It could outlive the owner's ownership of the property or do special permits expire upon the transfer of property?
So special permits can be time limited, so that we do have the ability to. In conditions to limit. This right now is with Pond Lane, that was one of the things that that we were discussing earlier this evening is. Some of the limits on whether the special permit would extend beyond the. The the time that the business is in operation or or things along those lines. So the board does have that kind of discretion.
And if the board, Mr. Chair, if the board does not speak to it in their decision. If the decision were to grant this permit, then is the default position of what happens with such a special permit? If you don't make a condition, if you don't even address the possibility, what then happens? Does it have the potential of outliving the transfer of the property?
So I think it would, so if the owners were to. To move and nobody maintained that use, it would become abandoned after, I believe, a period of two years and would no longer be in effect.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, it would. It it would outlive for a short period of two years.
Unless the next person took it over and then continued with that use. Then they could continue with it.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, they would not be required to return in front of the board.
As long as they made, did the same thing.
Like with Pond Lane, if another hardware store had taken over that, that was the same size and whatever, it would be retained. Okay, so. Then I would suggest if the board sees fit to grant a special permit here somehow, I don't know, it's a complicated matter. I would suggest that they put that some kind of limitation. On the lifetime of the special permit approval, probably limited to. The length of time the owner currently operates their business. And then have it expire at that point, just because. I can see a creeping difficulty if that is not the case. And the only other point I want to make is I want to commend the applicant on. Severely including beautiful pictures of many happy dogs in your package for the application. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
I wonder if the chair could inquire of the applicants what they think about. The condition that was proposed by Mr. Moore.
So certainly, so. Could ask the applicants, so if the board was to propose a condition that. The special permit would expire upon the. Transfer of the property or closure of the business, would that? Be an acceptable condition?
Of course, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address this application? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period for this hearing. So what the board has before it, uh, so this is in request for a special permit under section five, ten, one of the zoning bylaw, which is, um, related to home occupations. Um, home occupations have specific requirements, uh, specific conditions that need to be met. And we had discussed those briefly at the start. Uh, we'll, we'll come back to those a little bit. I don't think there were any concerns about, uh, those conditions, um, that are in the bylaw. Um, but the question really sort of came back to the definition for, um, a home occupation, and there were specifically two, um, aspects of that definition which were in question. So the first is the, the opening statement that an accessory, it's an accessory use which is carried on entirely within a dwelling unit. And it's incidental and subordinate to the dwelling use, which does not include retail sale of merchandise on the premises. So it's really this question about, um, entirely within a dwelling unit and what that requires. Um, and then the second is at the very end where it's talking about things that a home occupation shall not include, um, and one of those is a commercial stable or kennel. As we had mentioned, the term kennel is not defined within the zoning bylaw. But kennel is defined under state law. And I think that that's probably the definition that we would be obliged to follow. The question there then is, um, h- how does this apply? Because it, the definition for kennel doesn't really, um, the definition for kennel under state law would be a, a pack or collection of dogs on a single premise, including commercial boarding, training kennel. So it would be a pack or collection of dogs on a single premise. Um, is that what would be happening here? And is that the definition that the board needs to implement in this case?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
I, I don't actually agree with the premise that we are bound by the definition of, uh, of kennel for purposes of state law that has a totally different purpose and was enacted after the zoning bylaw. The purposes of zoning bylaw, I think it's far more plausible to say that the town meeting when it adopted it, adopted it probably with the sort of common sense understanding that Mr. Dupont pointed to. And I think that that is the path that we ought to follow as well.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Vanoski?
I, I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Hanlon. I think that also just thinking about, uh, just underscore the timing here. Um, it looks like the zoning, our bylaws were updated last before Ollie's law even went to effect. So it just doesn't seem to me like this is at all what kennel was necessarily meant to capture. I think the harder question is the dwelling unit question, the within dwelling unit question. To me, that seems to be what we just have to kind of figure out whether that's the stumbling block.
Thank you for that. With that in mind, um, how do we look at that expression? Entirely within a dwelling unit? The, to the way, my, my concern is for this case, certainly, um, there's been a lot of testimony that the, the outdoor use of the property for, as a part of this home occupancy business, um, that they're really, the, the effects on the neighborhood have been minimal, um, and don't have a high impact. The question is then what precedent do we set for other types of businesses that could be considered home, that somebody would want to have considered a home occupation? And do, do we need to consider that this sets a precedent or do we treat each individual application as a different intent? It seems to part, I think part of the reason for, uh, it being entirely within the premises is that the, it's the way, depending on where you are in town, certainly the location where the whites are is of, you know, an ideal location for this type of business. Um, if you were in my neighborhood with forty-five hundred square foot lots that, you know, are all bound tightly together, it would be a very different situation. And so I, I think that how we treat this doesn't need to be, um, something that necessarily is a, is a precedent for other uses, but we do need, I think, to be careful in how we uh, should the, should the board be inclined to want to approve this, that we uh, are careful in how we do the conditioning and how we state what it is that the board is doing um, in order to be clear that what we are, that we are looking at an individual case um, for an individual type of use, and this does not extend to all other possible uses that would occur partly within a premises, but also within the, within the yard of the premises.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
Um, I mean, this is a hard thing to do because, I mean, in some ways what we ought to be doing to figure it out is to figure out what are the other plausible ways in which, plausible circumstances in which that language would apply. Uh, I can't help thinking that it's the sort of thing of like exposing goods for wear in your front yard, for example, and actually left, sort of having the kind of sales that the summer we all have. Um, and so I'm a little bit worried about that, but I'm a lot less worried about it because, uh, at least in this kind of a situation, if, if we had had forty people here saying that these dogs were barking and howling and waking their babies, uh, we would just look to three point, three point three and find enough to be able to say that the adverse effects are not outweighing the, the beneficial impacts. Um, special permits have, have a sort of a judgment of that kind built in. So I'm not too worried about a disaster happening if we have to actually apply that rather than apply a per se rule in the beginning. I'm a little puzzled by coming up with a plausible way of articulating why it is that, you know, having a business for retail sales is separately excluded if I'm not, if I, if I remember correctly. Um, but, you know, I mean, I, when you look through it, what, what is there left that we would be worried about? And I'm not sure I have any answer to that. The, the things that I can think of readily would be excluded by other provisions of the law. And I'm not quite sure what we would do, uh, what we would do other, other than that. It does seem to me that I, I, I have a real hard time thinking that, that this was the paradigm that Tom Eading had in mind when it enacted the statute. Uh, and I suspect that some of us would have proposed amendments if we thought that was the case, so. Um, but I, I, this is that, this is the hard part of the case, is figuring out what to do, the language about wholly, wholly in one, in, in dwelling unit.
So for the board, so it sounds like the board wants to take a run at, um, finding a way of maintain, of allowing this to contain, this use to, um, be considered a home occupation. Uh, so we need, if that's the case, we need a rationale for, um, the question of the entirely within the dwelling units language. Um, and then I think we also need a set of conditions that we feel would be appropriate in order to, sort of maintain the, the use in of, in the current configuration where it's, it's a, um, something that is operating as an, um, an amenity to the town and amenity to, uh, the neighbors as opposed to, um, you know, something that somehow becomes a, a victim of its own success later on. Um, I would ask the applicants, how many, how many dogs do you typically have on site at a time?
It depends, but I would say anywhere between five and ten.
Okay. Would it be safe to say no more than ten?
I think we've had occasions where we've had up to twelve, but it's very rare. I, I mean, it's all, I can only fit so many in my minivan. So I usually have to turn people away and say, sorry, not today. Um.
And Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, if I may, I'd also like to point out that, um, the application and potentially subsequent approval of a commercial kennel license is entirely at the purview of the animal control officer. And one of the chief, um, items that she addresses, he or she would address when they review a property for such a license is how many dogs would be practical at that facility, you know, it, or, or house in this case. And, you know, if, if we lived on an acre, it'd be a different story, but you know, it's, yeah, uh, there'd be no scenario which I, I don't believe that she would prove us for really any more animals than what we're already, you know, accommodating.
Right.
Um, and for that matter, I should also say that should, there, there's no guarantee that she would approve this at all.
Right.
Um, and it does get reviewed by her annually. So if there were a situation where it became a disruption to the neighborhood, you know, she's the one that gets animal noise complaints. You know, I don't, I don't believe it's the zoning board necessarily, although I'm, I'm sure you guys get lots of complaints too. But I think probably the, the dog barking complaints go to her first. And I don't believe she'd be inclined to continue to approve or renew a license that was, was, you know, detrimental to the areas.
Yeah. How is the yard enclosed currently?
Um, it's six foot cedar fence?
Six foot cedar fence.
Yeah.
Solid board fence, not a picket.
Yeah, and, uh, the ground service, I believe, is artificial turf. Is that correct?
Yeah, we couldn't, even before I started this business, we couldn't grow grass. So yes, we, uh, we had the artificial turf before we had the dogs.
Yeah, for the kids.
For the kids.
So for the board, do we have sufficient information to move forward or is there more information that we need to gather? I think part of what sort of a scheme that I was sort of imagining, um, I still don't have a good solid understanding of how to deal with the entirely within the dwelling unit question. But we could put together a stratagem of conditions, um, apart from the, the main three that we always have. Uh, we could have a condition about the, the maximum number of dogs allowed at a time. We could have a condition about the enclosure, what the enclosure for the yard needs to make, needs to provide. Uh, we could have a, something about the surfacing, um, we could have a condition, um, in regards to, uh, you know, the pickup and drop off is by the owner only. Or by the resident only, because we, it's, we don't want lots of cars converging, um, twice a day at this residence. We want to have it be that, uh, it maintains that the, the owner of the facility is the one who is doing the pickup and drop off. I think we would want a condition in regards to the hours to maintain the existing hours, um, of eleven to two. I think we would want to, um, just lost it, just in my head. Um, oh, can do something about that, um, that the special permit uh, would expire upon sale or transfer of property? Um, were there other items that people, that board members felt required a condition? I wasn't sure if there was anything that we should, so one question was about the kennel license. Like, I don't think that's within, I don't think we should condition the permit on the requirement that they are able to get a proper licensing because that's not our problem. And I, I don't know if we should include or how we would include a condition in regards to, uh, the maintenance of the, of the yard. Um, if that's something we even want to get into, or if we just leave that to animal control as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hanlon?
Just to plant a thought, one of the reasons why it is we might be a little more relaxed in this context about what wholly within the dwelling unit means is that the inconveniences of having the dogs outside, and for that matter, the inconveniences of having the dogs inside are subject to a wholly separate regulatory, uh, scheme both by the town and by the state. And to some extent, I think that, that we can look at this in light of those regulatory contexts and say that it's not as important here as it might be in some other circumstance.
So then going back to the board, so does the board feel that it has sufficient information at this time to draft a decision? Or are there still any outstanding questions that the board would have?
Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
A number of conditions, and if we, I mean, for example, establishing hours of operation. Uh, you know, we, it, it may be helpful. I don't know that we have guidance as to the facts that require, that enable us to do the details of the conditions you've outlined. And you probably have a judgment, you and the, the rights have a better judgment as, as to how much we know and whether we know enough. Um, however, it wouldn't, I don't think it would be a disaster in this case actually to, instead of closing the public hearing, to continue it. It's, it's not something that I expect to have fifty people come to and, and if we have a conversation um, with, over a set of conditions, uh, and we get them right, it should be something that we can handle very quickly in the next hearing. We won't necessarily go as long as we did on Pond Lane.
Yeah, and my, my only concern is that the next hearing already has, I think, six items on it possibly. Um, is there, is there a particular time element uh, that we need to be aware of as that to the applicant?
I know Ollie's law goes into effect June twenty,
June first.
June first.
June first, okay.
Well, it's in effect, but she has to issue, she has to report back to the state on June first of all of the licenses that she's, she's issued, uh, this calendar year. Or, yeah, so she, she, I believe she'll need all this info by June first.
That being the case, it would be in the best interest of the applicant for the board to conti- if it's continuing, that we continue to May thirteenth, which would make May thirteenth very long. But that would allow us to vote on the final decision on May twenty seventh. Otherwise, we're into June. So if the, Mr. Hanlon?
Can I just think, one of the ways of accomplishing this in an efficient way is, um, is for the chair to, to have it, to work with, uh, the rights, the whites, to, um, to just do a, do a list of things that we, that can work into an opinion. And for that matter, it's entirely possible that if they submitted something like that for the record, that we could have before us, even when we come, e- even with the hearing, they could come before us with a draft opinion that would incorporate that, that could be amended a little bit if necessary, uh, at, at the actual hearing, and then we'd be done with it. Uh, one session earlier than we otherwise would. But this is really, the, the, the purpose of extra But this is really, the the purpose of extra time here is largely to work out details that that probably will become controversial.
Okay. So you're recommending that we could have one person, one member of the board to work with the applicant to come up with a list of conditions so that we effectively at the next meeting, we're doing something similar to what we had done earlier tonight, where we have conditions that we're just running through and
Right, and I would also suggest that we, that we at least experiment with preparing a decision, I mean, the decision other than the conditions, so that we have that ready to go, so that if thing is copacetic on the conditions, we can put them all together and approve something that night.
Okay. I'm keen to find a way to make that work. So we can discuss offline who will sort of take that on. But in the meantime, I would then move that we continue, that the Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington continue the public hearing for docket three eight four three seventeen Brattle Place to Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty five at seven thirty.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will vote um, on the continuance. Uh, so voting yes or no, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly? Is not with us anymore this evening. Uh, Mr. La Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, we are continued on seventeen Brattle Place. Thank you very much for being with us this evening. And uh, we will be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, at this point, uh, we have our uh, next hearing is docket three eight four five, three nineteen Appleton Street. I first like to thank the applicants for sticking with us for so long, apologize for the late start time for you. But if you go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us what you're proposing to do.
Yeah, so I'll go. Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I'll keep my spot to a minute here, but um, my wife and I, Christina D'Onofrio, we've lived in Belmont for twenty years now. Um, my wife is the school nurse at the Thompson Elementary. Formerly, she was at the Dallin. We've always been struck by the sense of community that Arlington has. And we made the decision to sell our house and move to Arlington, so we are, we are making the move and we're excited to do it, and we're excited to be part of the community, so um, I will pass it over to Kelly, who will go over all of the technical aspects of this, but look forward to working with everyone and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Ross, if you could go ahead and uh, give Ms. Boucher the ability to share.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Kelly Boucher. I'm the project architect for Appleton Street. Uh, my address is fifty-four Harvard Street in Brookline, Massachusetts. And let me go ahead and share my screen. Um, hopefully, it will be a pretty straightforward presentation. Um, the house at three nineteen Appleton Street is a small cape. Um, Nick and his wife uh, purchased it and already have a permit in place to build the dormers on the second floor to help expand their um, their living space, and that was as of right. Um, the house is existing non-conforming for a few reasons. Um, it doesn't meet its uh, minimum lot size at only forty-eight, thirty-four square feet. Um, it and it is only fifty-five feet wide, so it's both not as big or as wide as um, a conforming lot. And the way that the house is situated is currently the front yard setback is nineteen point nine feet with a twenty-five foot setback required. So you can see here on the floor plan, this hatched part is the part of the building that's currently in the setback now. Um, and our application is simply to um, to put a roof over the front stoop. So the front stoop has already been permitted as of right. Um, it's an unenclosed area. Um, here from the site plan, you can see it's, it's located right at the front of the property. It, there are two small roofs. There's one little roof overhang over the garage door to help shed water from the face of the house at the opening, and then a second roof over the front porch. And here in the elevations, here's the front elevation. So the dormers are being constructed now, and the two items that are in question are this uh, small roof hood and then this uh, roof with the four columns on the front. The, the proposed roof sticks out uh, six feet further from the face of the house, is twenty-two and a half feet long. Um, and meets the side yard setback of ten feet, and there's plenty of space on the left side. And here are some renderings. Um, on the right are existing photos of the house before the dormer construction started. Um, and the renderings on the left show uh, the proposed condition with the full dormer buildout and the porches that we're seeking a special permit for. Um, so that's uh, that's pretty much the the crux of our project. Um, I'm going to turn it over to you for for questions and comments next.
Great, thank you very much. So I had looked, just taking a quick look through the application, you've covered most of the things I've noted. On the application itself, you had noted that the proposed lot coverage was thirty-nine point nine percent, which really doesn't look
Oh, you know what? Um, I spoke, Colleen pointed that out to me about a week ago, and um, and so we went back and edited the set of drawings, and so our our new lot coverage um, right here is going from seventeen point nine to twenty-one point one. So it's under the thirty-five percent. That's, it's because I had um, I had divided by the building area and not the lot area, which was the math the math error, which has since been corrected.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Uh, and then you had noted that the, if the front yard setback is non-compliant, the current right yard setback is non-compliant.
Non-compliant for the house, but our our porch will be compliant. It's it's only a few more inches on the side, so um,
Okay.
So we're not seeking side yard um, setback relief as well.
Okay. Um, and then the rear yard is compliant, um, number of stories is compliant, maximum height is compliant. And then the usable open space is in the rear yard. And what can you show me just what the usable open space for?
For usable open space actually is a little bit of a low number because this the property slopes, um, nine feet from front to back over a hundred feet, that most of the lot is over that eight percent usable slope just existing. And so only the flattest, most usable part is right here in the front, which only has just a one percent slope.
Um, so the town's definition for usable open space is that it be, it has to be twenty-five, but at least twenty-five by twenty-five. Um, so technically, you have no usable open space, but that it's an existing condition, so it's not a concern of ours, but I just wanted to make sure we had that correct.
Okay, under, I understand.
Yeah. Okay. So this is an application, this is under five three nine D, uh, because they have a permitted front deck that they are looking to uh, build upon, which would be the um, the the porch that you're you're seeing here. And uh, are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, um, I will go ahead and uh, Ms. Boucher, if you don't mind, uh, closing the share. Um, I will go ahead and ask if uh, open the hearing for public comment. Public comments take as it relates to the matter at hand. Should we direct it to the board for the purpose of informing its decision? Those wishing to speak uh, can raise the hand using the react tab in the Zoom application. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this application? Again, this number three eight four five, uh, three nineteen Appleton Street. Mr. Moore?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Um, I uh, I would like to, I guess I would like to ask initially through you um, of the applicant. Uh, were the Arlington design guidelines used in concocting this particular design?
Not necessarily, no. I would say.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just, I just wondered, I um, and I don't mean that accusatorily.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not super familiar with those design guidelines, so I'm going to solidly say that no.
Well, I can, I can say that uh, the reason, the reason for my question was uh, had had the answer been yes. I was just going to say a a term of art that I have used pretty regularly is called uh, basically uh, an unsympathetic renovation. And this is not that. This is not that at all. This is the opposite of that, and I was hoping perhaps that the design guidelines might have led you to this particular design, because I I walk by this property a lot, and um, this is a, I think, a very uh, a a high quality renovation of what amounts to a very simple current design. Um, and I I appreciate that as a, as a neighbor who lives in the neighborhood. Um, because we have lots of homes that are variously renovated, and this is a, this is a, an an excellent design in my humble opinion. Um, is, are you currently planning, uh, or how are you planning to support the porch? Is it going to be on pilings or a foundation or?
It will be on on pilings located underneath the columns, so there's four columns along the front, and each one will either get a sonnet tube or a pier footing. We haven't sorted through all the structure. We wanted to just make sure we had permissions to build before we um, advanced the structure, but there won't be a full foundation. There's no basement underneath. There's no plans to make it so that it could be an expo, uh, an enclosed space later.
Exactly where I was headed, thank you. And and finally, uh, in in uh, support of the idea of evolving non conforming properties towards conformance or towards working anyway with the current uh, set of zoning bylaws. I I see the driveway was expanded to the property edge at some point, and I would, I would hope that maybe the board would consider requiring a a remediation of a vegetated buffer on that side instead of the non-permeable driveway which goes to the property. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there other members of the public who wish to address this application? There are no other members of the public on this app, on this call, so no. Uh, with that, I will go ahead and close the public comment period uh, for this application. Um, so just uh, review what the board has before it. This is a permit, uh, special permit application under section five three nine D, seeking to uh, construct a porch over the top of what is a currently permitted but yet unconstruted deck. This requires a special permit from the board. Uh, that section five three nine D does not have any special requirements or regulations associated with it. Um, it falls under the standard uh, conditions for a special permit under section three thirty-three of our zoning bylaw. Uh, I will review the required findings. Uh, first, that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. There are really very few adverse impacts um, of this proposal. What is being proposed is a an open porch um, on the front of an existing house uh, that currently has no cover uh, coming into the 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 front of the house. This will create a benefit to the the owners in a, in a transitional space uh, between the the street and their house, but will also be a benefit uh, to the neighborhood um, by uh, the, the increase in the uh, the the value of the home, but also the the visual appearance and visual improvement of the home. Um, the requested use is allowed or allowed by a special permit in the district. As we noted, five three nine D does allow the board to grant this by special permit. Requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. The orderly improvement of 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 property in town is of of benefit to the town. Um, and creating a a space, a transitional space, especially at the front of the house, that allows the 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 new uh, owners, the new residents of the Town of Arlington to um, enjoy this property and to uh, hopefully enjoy the the benefit of their neighbors is a of direct benefit to them and to the community. Uh, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Um, this will have no impact on existing sightlines, uh, will not result in the addition of of additional vehicles or traffic uh, associated with the property. Requested use will not overload any public system. Um, it will not create any sizable change in any utility usage. Associated with the property. There are no special regulations that are required to be fulfilled. The requested use will not impair the character integrity of the district. Um, this maintains the the property, the building is essentially the the same scale. Um, but it does create this additional uh, living space at the front of the of the property that can be enjoyed by the residents. Of the property uh, will not be detrimental to the public health or welfare. Um, and will not cause an excess use detrimental to the neighborhood where it maintains the existing uh, use, which is a an allowed use within the district. Um, are there any uh, questions, comments, or additions from the board in regards to those proposed findings?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
Just quickly, just to to echo Mr. Mr. Moore, who I thought was was quite right in complimenting the design. One of the things that we saw a lot in the residential diet guideline, residential uh, design guidelines has to do with prominent garages, and of course, this does have a prominent garage today, and I thought when I looked at the renderings, that this did a very nice job of creating a source of interest to the side of the of the uh, garage, that people are going to be looking at the porch rather than looking at the garage, and it creates a much better balance in appearance to the street.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hanlon. So the for the board to be um, inclined to approve the application, there are three standard conditions which have been read into the record previously this evening. Um, are there any additional conditions that members of the board would want to include in the vote on this application? I know Mr. Uh, Mr. Moore had mentioned the question about uh, enclo- possible future enclosure. A possible future enclosure would always come before the board, because that's a including a porch requires a special permit, so that could not be done with uh, by right, that would have to be done uh, with approval from the board. So seeing none, I would ask Mr. Hanlon, if he would be willing to coordinate the production of a decision in favor of the application?
Mr. Chairman, with due emphasis of the word coordinate, I would.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Uh, so with that, uh, we have reviewed the findings, we have reviewed conditions. Um, and we have discussed a decision, so with that, I would move uh, that the zoning board of appeals for the Town of Arlington close the public comment, uh, the public hearing for docket three eight four five, three nineteen Appleton Street. That would then allow to give the board um, two weeks uh, until the May fifth thirteenth, excuse me, May thirteen hearing of the board to prepare a decision, a final decision for voting at that time. Uh, so we have now as a motion to con- uh, to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Hanlon. Uh, so roll call vote of the board, yes or no to close the hearing. Um, Mr. Dupont? Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. La Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, we are closed on three nineteen Appleton Street. Thank you very much for coming before us this evening. Appreciate your patience and sticking with us.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome, and welcome to Arlington.
Oh, thank you very much.
Absolutely. So with that, that is the end of the public hearing section, um, which would normally be good thing, except for now, that means we have to go back into all the administrative stuff that we passed at the start. So with that, go to item two on our agenda, which is uh, vote on the decision for docket three eight three nine sixteen Lansdowne Road. Uh, this is a decision, I think I wrote this one. Um, it's distributed to the board for questions and comments. Uh, none were received, so final version was posted back to um, Ms. Ross in this evening. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the written decision for sixteen Lansdowne Road? Seeing none, I move that the zoning board of appeals for the Town of Arlington approve and adopt the written Seeing none, I moved that the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington approve and adopt the written decision in docket three eight three nine sixteen Lansdowne Road. Which grants a special permit under section five three nine D in the zoning bylaw.
Second.
Second.
Next, uh, so roll call vote of the board voting yes or no. Uh, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that is approved. That brings us to item three on our agenda. Uh, which is vote on docket three eight four one sixty-nine Henderson Street. This is a decision that was written by Mr. Hanlon, distributed to the. Board for questions and comments, final version posted today. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the written decision for sixty-nine Henderson Street? Seeing none, I moved that the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington approve and adopt the written decision in docket three eight four one sixty-nine Henderson Street. Which grants a special permit under section five three nine D in the zoning bylaw. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So roll call vote of the board, voting yes or no, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yeah.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that is approved. That brings us to item four on our agenda, member vote, meeting minutes. Uh, from the April eighth meeting, uh, these were prepared by um. Colleen Ralston, distributed to the board for questions and comments. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the minutes from April eighth? Seeing none, I moved that the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington approve the minutes from the April eighth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So vote of the board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So this brings us, um, I apologize, this is, does not appear on the agenda, but is something we had discussed prior. Um, the second meeting of them of April every year is our elections. Um, that we need to do on, under state law, there are two positions that the board needs to elect. Uh, for the board. Um. One is the chair, uh, and the second is the clerk. Uh, the board, we have not really voted on the clerk in a very long time. Um. Colleen has served as our clerk for um, a number of years and will be, I will be uh. Just go ahead and nominate her to serve as clerk for the zoning Board of Appeals. Um. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, calling to ex- accept the nomination for the position of clerk?
I do, thank you.
You are welcome. Uh, so uh, vote, roll call vote of the board in favor of um. Having Colleen Ralston be the clerk for the zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Um, so Ralston is elected as clerk. Uh, this brings us to everybody's favorite position, the position of chair. Um, I have served in this role for five years. Um, I am. Very open to somebody else stepping forward and accepting this position. Um, is there anyone else who is interested in serving as Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals? Seeing none, Mr. Hanlon?
I move that the Board of Re-elect Mr. Mr. Klein is Chair for another year. Second.
Thank you, I will accept. I will also encourage everyone else to consider being Chair next time around. Um. So I guess I can lead, still lead the vote of the board on this. Um, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
Uh, the chair reluctantly votes yes. Um, to serve again as Chair. Thank you all very much for your support. Look forward to uh, to serving and working with you for another year. Um, those are the elections that we needed to carry out. Um, we do have some longer term projects that we have started and not really gone very far with. Um. But we will not take those up at this time. If the meeting on the May twenty-seventh maintain, stays light, um. I think we may bring forward a couple of of topics we've discussed in the past, um, mostly around rules and regulations and things like that. Um. But we'll see. That's also um, for members of the board, so the. Uh, Mr. Hanlon and myself are town meeting members. I don't know if any others are town meeting members. Um, town meeting starts th- this upcoming Monday, meets Mondays and Wednesdays, so the May thirteenth will be sandwiched between two town meeting sessions. Um, it's it's unclear if the twenty-seventh will still be in session for town meeting or not. Um. But there'll be, it'll be a busy, a busy time, as it were. Um, as we discussed, on May thirteenth, we now have. Seven things? I think. Um, so that's gonna be a very busy night, but the twenty-seventh, we only have one. And um, Colleen, I think it's too early to know June tenth and June twenty-fourth, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't have anybody who um, is in process.
Okay.
To um, even show up for the twen- I don't have anybody else for the twenty-seventh and nobody passed that. I do have people have called asking, so I know they're coming, I just don't know when.
Okay. Great, maybe an early summer. Right.
Yes.
So with that, I would like to thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting. I especially would like to thank Colleen Ralston, Mike Chapman, and Jaclyn Munson for their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. Please note, the purpose of the board's recording of the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of its proceedings. It is our understanding. Recording made by ACMI will be available on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town. Arlington dot ma dot U S. That email address is also listed on the Zoning Board of Appeals website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourns.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Go to the second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Roll call vote to adjourn, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the board is adjourned. Thank you all very much, long night, but I think we got a lot done, so. Thank you all. We will be in touch.
Have a good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night.